Let's call the meeting to order for the afternoon of January 12th, 2021. I will begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you're able to stand, please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Menes.
President.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Roscoe.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Asparta.
Here.
Arenas. Foley.
Here.
Mayhann.
Here.
Jones.
President.
President, thank you, Tony. Today's invocation will be provided by Shereen Al Ghazhar, the life coach with Feed Love Now. Vice Mayor Jones will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce our invocation speaker, Shereen Al Ghazhar, founder of Feed Love Now. Shereen is an executive and life coach who will share a message of mindfulness and resiliency. Mindfulness and resiliency are strengths that we will rely on heavily throughout our individual 2021 journeys. I think I'm going to have to say that one more time because mindfulness and resiliency are things or strengths that we're going to have to rely on very heavily during this year. But it's an honor to welcome Shereen as she leads us through an exercise on mindfulness.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shereen Al Ghazhar. I'm a professional executive and life coach. I wanted to welcome Mayor Locardo, Vice Mayor Jones, and the council members today, and thank Vice Mayor Jones for inviting me to speak to you today about mindfulness and presence. A wise man once wrote, "The thinking is a wonderful servant and poor master." Mindfulness is the art and practice of creating space between you and your thoughts and being able to simply observe your thoughts. So I invite you today to just do a visual exercise with me. To sit back and relax and imagine that the being part of your human being is this vast sky, powerful, endless, quiet, and that your human side are those clouds that come and go. And those clouds represent your thoughts, your emotions, your daily challenges that come and go. So when you're challenged throughout your day and you're bombarded with various thoughts, in order not to be lost in those thoughts, I invite you to step back and be the sky and simply observe. And from that place, you have the power of choosing how to proceed. You can choose to accept those thoughts, you can choose to go with them, you can choose to change them, you can choose to release them. But from that space of choice, you take back your power and you are present in what you're actually experiencing. So I invite you all to be the sky and take your power back. Thank you so much for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Shereen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And thank you, Shereen, for those thoughts. So we're on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? I would like to, let's see here. I don't see any hands. I would like to adjourn today's meeting in memory of a real hero of mine and of many people here in San Jose, and that is Judge Sharnia Chapman. Judge Chapman was born and raised in Bakersfield, and she went on to become a Mustang at California Polytechnic University, where she played point guard on the women's basketball team. And after graduating, of course, her love for sport carried her on, had coaching jobs at Andrew Hill High, the Anza Community College, and finally San Jose State University, where she was the head women's coach for a decade. And for six consecutive seasons under her leadership, Spartans had a winning record. And she was much beloved as a coach and ultimately honored by San Jose State University's Women's Basketball Coach of the Century and was inducted in the Sports Hall of Fame in 2004 at San Jose State. But that was just one chapter and was really a remarkable career, remarkable life. She decided in 1986 she was going to go get a law degree, and so she got her J.D. from Hastings. And after graduating in 1989, she accepted a position as a deputy prosecutor in San Clara County DA's office, where she prosecuted gang violence, sexual assault, and murder cases over the next decade. And but she ended up leaving the office right around the time as I came in the office. She was appointed by Governor Davis as his first Superior Court appointment in San Clara County in the year 2000. And I can tell you, as I was going into the office, her legend was still very much there in the office, and a lot of folks talked about how amazing Judge Chapman was as a colleague, as a friend, someone who loved to hug and welcome everybody. They just had a wonderful way about her. In any event, during her tenure as a judge, she supervised Superior Courts, three dedicated domestic violence courts. She really played a visionary role in modernizing our approach, domestic violence, creating a specialized court for mentally ill, domestic violence defendants, and a specialized program for defendants with children. And keeping with her vision outside the courtroom, she founded a nonprofit, and I think many of us are familiar with this one, Building Peaceful Families, to try to improve the health, safety, and well-being of children by educating, honoring, and encouraging involved, responsible, and committed parenting. She has wonderful programs, including the Golden Grandmothers, those grandmothers who have given up on their retirement to raise their grandchildren. We know that is a very real phenomenon for many families today. Top dads are fathers who made a difference in their children's lives. Fatherhood Conference to educate fathers and father figures, including probationers and teen fathers and single and divorced fathers who desperately want and need resources to become more committed and involved and responsible parents. Her Phenomenal Woman Awards, and one that I really loved, for those of you who are out there, the Turkey Trot and various races all around the valley, the mighty, mighty Red Power Divas. And these were folks who were dressed in red, primarily a fierce group of women, but ultimately I think it grew over time, included a lot of men and children as well. And folks who were, these were not folks who were looking to win the Olympics. They were just all about the camaraderie and the spirit and getting outside and enjoying exercise and really encouraging those who maybe haven't had opportunities to exercise in their lives and really get introduced to this kind of group effort. And it is a wonderful legacy to live on, well beyond her. She's a recipient of many, many community service awards, the Bar Association Unsung Hero Award, Social Justice Award, Commission on Status of Women, Women of Vision Award, California Judges Association, I could go on and on. She's won a lot of awards for all the obvious reasons because she has led an extraordinary life. And she touched so many people here in San Jose and will forever be loved and revered. And she has really left our community a much better place because of her incredible leadership and incredible service. We are joined by Michelle Peterson, who is her goddaughter. And Michelle, if you're with us, I'd love to hear if you had any words you wanted to share.
Yes. Thank you so much, Sam. And the San Jose City Council, on behalf of Sharon, I would just like to thank you for taking this time to recognize, as you say, such an extraordinary and incredible woman. You know, Sharon loved serving her community, whether she was on the bench or she was rolled up her sleeves and did her hard work doing Building Peaceful Families and that wonderful Red Power Diva group that just encouraged everybody to be their best and to work out and stay healthy and be in, no matter what walk of life you came from. I do think that her hugs and her smile and most of all, her energy will be missed by all. And she did live an extraordinary life, and I think all of us that were blessed to be in her presence at one time, getting a big hug and a big smile, she will definitely be missed. And I just thank you all for allowing me to be a part of this special moment. Thank you.
Michelle, thank you for sharing. Councilor Crossco.
Thank you. Well, like many other women, I was deeply touched by Judge Chapman. I got to serve in her court when I worked for First Five, and we had a pilot program unlike any other program that had existed in the county. We had an opportunity to work with families who were suffering from domestic violence and had an opportunity to work with the children who lived in those households. And what was remarkable about that was that, one, that she welcomed the program. She was innovative in that way and did everything that she could to support families who were really in a very difficult situation, but really knew that children were her north star. And whatever happened between the couple resonated in children's development. And so she allowed us to go in there and be able to do assessments with little ones. Councilmember Arenas was part of that program as well. And I'm getting a little teary-eyed because because I don't think we realize how much someone impacts our lives until they're gone. And I want to say also, the first time that I ran for city council, I didn't succeed, but I had a very intimate conversation with her. And she was encouraging and she was just a strong believer in mentoring young women. At that time, I was much younger than I am now, but she really believed in what I was doing and encouraged me to move forward regardless of whether I had an infrastructure, regardless of whether I had mass support. She pushed me forward. And it was those words that really made a difference in terms of whether or not I jumped in, which I did. Afterwards, after I won my second round of campaigning, she invited me to speak at several of her events. And I just remember Judge Chapman being really expressing this sense of pride that really sticks with you. And so I'm just very grateful of her mentorship. I'm grateful of the legacy that she leaves behind. For some of us, it made all of the difference in the world in terms of where our careers went and the kind of role that we continued to play and why we wanted to continue to play that role in families' lives. So I'm very grateful for what she has done here in the county and very grateful for the powerhouse that she was in this little tiny package of a woman. So thank you, Mayor, for bringing this up because, again, for some of us, she really did make all of the difference in the world.
Thank you for your words, Councilwoman Crossco. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Let's vote on the rules of the day.
Menes.
Yes.
Peralas.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Asparta.
Yes.
Arenas.
Hi.
Foley.
Hi.
Mayhann.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Locardo.
Hi. All right, on to the closed session report, Nora.
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. We don't have anything to report out of closed session as of today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to item 3.1, which is Report of the City Manager. There is a presentation today. Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I want to start off with a couple of organizational updates, if I could. Starting off with highlighting the appointment of Carolina Camarena. We made this announcement last week. We pointed Carolina to the Director of Communications. Carolina grew up in our city, has 20 years of experience, knows our communities very well. I just want to congratulate her on this appointment and thank her for her willingness to take it on. You know, I'm really impressed. I think many of us are with her vision for communicating with our community and really look forward to working with her in this new role here in our city. So thank you, Carolina, for taking it on. Next, I wanted to do an acknowledgement for our interim police chief, Dave Noff. Dave's going to be retiring in a couple of weeks, and many people don't know this, that he actually delayed his retirement quite a bit to help us through the transition of Eddie Garcia's retirement. So I think Dave's kind of hung on as long as he can, but just can't thank him enough for all the work he's done and just his commitment to the city and the department. You know, I think he stayed on as long as he did, really out of love for both. So more to come from us in terms of, you know, the interim role once Dave retires and until we have a new police chief. And on that note, just noting that it put out an information memorandum yesterday outlining the process moving forward for our police chief recruitment. So let's now jump over to unsung heroes. So somebody's going to throw a slide up there for me. Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. So I wanted to start off by recognizing our PRNS team out at the Central Service Yard. This team has continued working throughout the entire pandemic, really never stopped. Really, a lot of work went in in the early days in terms of implementing new safety protocols. And I just want to say, this was not easy work. And we had our ups and downs, I'll admit, in terms of trying to make sure we were doing everything safe for our employees and our community, but this team stuck with it and has continued to be doing great work. Everything from resetting water timers in every single park, completing construction projects within parks, upkeeping at city pools when they've not been in use, and even traveling up to family camp to keep things running up there or keep things in order up there. They're a tight-knit team, and the work that they do for us is just irreplaceable. So I'm grateful to them all and thank you for all the work you do. You see there on the board, so the team members are Tash, Angie, Deville, Kevin, Albert, Frank, Steve, Jacob, Alfredo, Gary, Richard Denaya, Anthony, Matt, Sean, Luis, Rudy, Emmanuel, Richard Avalos, and Mark. So thank you to all of you and really appreciate the work that you're doing. All right. Next, we're going to jump into our COVID update, and I'm going to pass it off to, I think, Kip, who will start us off, and we've got four distinct presentations today. Kip?
Thank you, Dave, and congratulations, Carolina. Honored to be continuing to work with you and your tremendous leadership on communications. I am Kip Harkness, Deputy City Manager, and along with Lee Wilcox, serve as the Director of the Emergency Operations Center. So on behalf of all of the employees and our nonprofit partners in the EOC and across the city responding to COVID-19, I'd like to take some time to update you on our response and key events over the last month, month since we last spoke to you. It's now been 354 days since we initiated our pandemic response team in the city of San Jose. And in that time here in the United States, we have lost over 372,000 lives and people to this disease, including an all-too-painful 919 deaths locally with about 700 patients currently struggling with COVID-19 in local hospitals, along with continued high unemployment and economic distress, all of which disproportionately impact our Black, Latinx, and Native American individuals and communities, not only across the nation but also here in San Jose. I have to say, these numbers really are staggering and defy comprehension. Each person sick is a person and their family who's suffering. Each death is a tragedy into itself. And we have had days now, like last Friday, with over 4,000 deaths in a single day and are seeing daily new case numbers at the state level in California at a rate we used to see nationally and consider too high. So we began this presentation today knowing we are in the darkest of days and with compassion for all of those who are suffering as a result of this pandemic. We'll begin, next slide. We'll begin with a look at a data dashboard that's provided by the Johns Hopkins University that gives us daily updates and gives us a sense of comparisons across the nation and indeed across the globe. So if Elizabeth, you go ahead and play that video, we'll take a look at that for about one minute exactly. So I would say the only thing I have to add to that is the unfortunate note that the Monday and Tuesday numbers tend to be lower than the seven-day running average because of the way reporting is done. So that 1,700 death total you saw for today is not an indication of decline, but just an indication of how the reporting happens. And in fact, as you can see from this slide, we are still in the very biggest wave of COVID yet. The data that you're seeing is from a pilot that we are running with the Center of Disease Control and Stanford University in collaboration with Santa Clara County. And it looks at wastewater effluent, which covers about 80% of the city and uses a number of techniques to estimate the prevalence of the virus within the community. This wastewater surveillance technique is very useful for us because it provides a forward-looking understanding of what is likely to happen. The virus shows up in the wastewater when people are asymptomatic or even if they never become symptomatic. It also shows up whether or not they get tested. So we found that this gives us a kind of six-to-seven-day lead on what we see in the testing numbers. What you see here is that the issuance of the stay-at-home order has yet to bring us down from a peak. And in fact, we have risen significantly since the issuance of the stay-at-home order. So this continues to grow locally in a very severe way. Next slide. The other slide that I'll share from the county is this one on ICU capacity. I found this particular slide very useful because what they've done here is they've done a red line across the top, which is their normal ICU capacity. Because the percentage of ICU beds available is a little bit deceptive in that they have been working extremely hard to make ICU capacity available and surging the number of beds. But I think this diagram shows you what's happening in a way that's painfully clear. You see, the orange part on the bottom is the number of COVID or suspected COVID patients that are part of the ICU. And what you see is that has been steadily rising. You see that the blue number is the normal number of ICU patients. You see that that has been getting smaller. This does not mean that less people are having these different accidents or these different conditions. It's that they are rationing or allowing less of those folks into the ICU and managing the ICU capacity as best they can to preserve that capacity. We're really fortunate that we have a strong healthcare system locally and the county leadership on marshaling both the private and their own resources to provide for this healthcare capacity. But they are in a very, very difficult time right now. We have both seven-day rolling average of 1,250 new cases. We saw on January 10th, 1,551 new cases and 36 deaths in a single day. And this is really, again, the darkest and hardest part of this pandemic, not only locally but nationally. And that fact that it's national and not just local differentiates it from previous surges and makes it even more difficult. Because if a surge is localized, you can always draw resources for healthcare or other things from other parts of the country. But since this is a national surge, we are limited in what we can draw in mutual aid for everything from healthcare to vaccinations to other needs. So the next slide you see here is just a summation and a reminder that we continue to be under a regional stay-at-home order. This order is now in effect indefinitely and will only be reversed when we get that ICU and healthcare situation under control, which is not any time in the foreseeable next few weeks. So we expect to stay in this regional stay-at-home order for the foreseeable future at this point in time. On the city side, our own internal planning has a 10-stage process. Stages one through five ramp us up in response, and stages six, seven, eight, nine, 10 intended to ramp us back down into the new normal. We had gotten as far over to the right as stage eight, but then with the latest surge have moved progressively backwards. And on December 6th, in sync with the regional stay-at-home order, we moved back into stage five, which is our highest level of response and our most restricted level of service provision. We are currently in stage five, and we will stay in stage five as long as the regional stay-at-home order is in place. I would say the only thing that's positive about going back into stage five is we know much more about both the disease at this point and how to safely operate in the context of this pandemic. So we have a broader range of services opening and functioning in this version of stage five than we did the last time around. Nevertheless, it is our most restrictive and highest alert stage. Next slide. I want to talk just a little bit about vaccinations, and that is the one light of hope in this dark winter, is the existence now of effective vaccinations that have begun to be distributed and to make their way into people's arms. We are fully supportive of the county's leadership in this role in vaccine distribution here in the city EOC. And to support the county, we have spun up an internal vaccination task force within the EOC structure, which started work mid-December as the vaccinations began to scale. That task force, which is led by Ann Tran, who I'll introduce momentarily, has four work streams: internal vaccinations, which have largely been led at this point very well by our fire department, and we'll hear more about that soon; communication and community engagement, which will be one of the main areas of responsibility we will have and will be engaging deeply with the mayor and council on that topic as we learn and grow that function; advocacy in alignment with the county at the state, federal level to make sure that we have the resources that we need and the appropriate policies. And then last but not least is site selection support upon request from the county. We're currently working through some requests from the county for potential expansions of vaccination sites across the city. So with that, I want to introduce Ann Tran, who is our director of our internal task force working on this and brings to this position a great deal of professional expertise and training in medicine and related public health. She also is one of the co-authors of our original pandemic response plan and so has been involved from the 24th of January on deeply in how we think about pandemic and pandemic response. She also happens to be bilingual, bicultural, and fluent native speaker in Vietnamese and understand deeply the immigrant experience, which I think her guiding us has been helpful as we think about that last inch and reaching our most vulnerable. She leads the team of diverse and talented folks, and I'll let her speak now with an update on where we think we are with vaccinations and our approach to it. Ann, take it away.
Thank you, Kip. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Ann, and I currently lead the Vaccination Campaign Task Force here in the EOC. And we're working with leaders within the EOC to support the county who is lead in the allocation and distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine. I want to take a moment to reiterate what Kip has mentioned in a previous council session. which is vaccine allocation and distribution involves federal, state and local decisions. And at the federal government level, you know, the, the CDC helps develop and approve. The CDC and the FDA helps develop and approve vaccines as well as establish an overall prioritization guideline for for states and local governments to follow. And this federal government also has a role in distributing vaccines to federal agencies and and organizations like prisons. And you'll see that at the state level, the state also provides direct allocation to state-run entities and multi-county entities. And at the local level, the county is responsible for coordinating the logistics and vaccine storage and administration at the local level, especially through the providers. And next slide, please.
Can you hang on for just a second? I think we have actually the wrong deck up. So we'll just do a quick swap out of this deck with the correct one. I don't think it's substantially changed anything we said, but just want to make sure we have the latest slides as things are changing extremely rapidly in this area as folks know. So just give us a moment while we swap out the decks. One of the things I did want to add to the, this, the point that Anne was making on that slide is that you know, we have very strong partners at the county on this. Dr. Finster Schib, who is leading the vaccination effort, very skilled in this. And one of the things the county has let us know is they have a fairly limited visibility on some of what's happening at the, the state and the county level and are really finding out, for example, day to day, how many doses of vaccines are coming into the county. So there's a lot of, a, a lot of things that are being figured out in quick time. And so with that, I think if we could bring up the new slide deck and we'll let Anne continue back on. Just bear with us for just a moment. And why don't you start from your notes on the next slide and then actually, actually this next one is pretty complicated and I do want people to see it. So let's, I apologize. We'll go ahead and keep paused here for a second. There's a, there's a lot to this next one. It's the, the federal vaccine schedule, which has just apparently changed as of this morning. So want to make sure you know what we know and what we don't know about what the vaccination schedule is on where people are and aren't. I, I'm going to go ahead and pull up my deck and share it so that we are working from the right deck. Just give me a second to do that. And I will bring you right to the point here. All right. Okay, let me get this going and then I'll have to swap a few things here. And let me swap that. There, you should be seeing now, this was the slide. And again, this shows sort of the circle arrow is, is, this is from the county. It shows there's sort of limited visibility into what's going on at the state and the federal level. So this next slide now, Anne, back to you.
Thanks so much for juggling that, Kip. And I want to give you an update on the, the state's updated vaccination guidance. We are in phase one A, which is, which includes healthcare workers, long-term care residents and staff, and also includes emergency medical services. An update from our fire department, our fire department, San Jose Fire Department Emergency Medical Technicians, EMTs, and paramedics have began receiving the COVID-19 vaccinations under the phase one A group. Currently, the fire department personnel began receiving vaccinations on December 22nd of 2020. And we have 71% of sworn fire personnel, including EMTs, but not exclusively to EMTs, and have received the first vaccination dose. And this week, some will be receiving their second dose on January 2nd, 2021. The first responders, a first responder specific clinic was established to accelerate the vaccine delivery and fire department paramedics from across the county have been supporting this accelerated vaccination effort, including San Jose Fire Department. And the overall status of the phase one A vaccine rollout is that out of a total of the county's population of 135 to 140,000 healthcare personnel, a total of first doses received for healthcare providers is at 100,280. And the county announced
110,000.
110,280.
Yeah.
And the county, thank you, Kip, the county announced on Friday that the healthcare system currently has enough vaccines to administer to everyone under phase one A. And the state has granted them approval to start administering vaccinations to everyone in phase one A without distinguishing between tiers one, two, and three within that group. It is also important to note that prioritization guidelines are subject to change and can be modified a little bit by the county to meet local needs. And the vaccination rollout for phase one B tier one will start by the end of the month. That's what we heard from the county. And under phase one B tier one, you'll see that seniors 75 years and older and workers in education, childcare and emergency services and food and agriculture are included. However, and given the news that we've received just about 20 minutes ago, that the Trump administration would release all vaccine doses and instructed states to immediately start vaccinating Americans 65 years and older, as well as those who have health conditions that put them at greater risk for, from dying from the virus. So then the announcement came from Health Secretary Alex Azar. And states will lose their allocations if they do not use up their doses quickly. So this might impact how vaccinations will be scaling out at the local level. Next slide. The E S C has been invited to attend regular working group sessions with the county. In this case, it is the COVID-19 Community Stakeholder Working Group with the goal of helping to identify racial and health equity criteria for vaccine planning, co-develop messaging unique to specific groups and share vaccine-specific information to allow people to make informed decisions about the COVID-19 vaccine. We also have the opportunity to meet with public health leaders for working group planning and lead sector-specific breakout groups and subcommittee meetings. The county affirms that we are still in the early stages of mass vaccine distribution to the general public. So we here in the EOC will ensure to inform council and leadership as new developments related to the vaccine arise. Our next stakeholder working group meeting is scheduled for January 25th, 2021, with different sub-working group meetings happening between now and the next slide. In addition to contributing to the county's vaccine stakeholder working group, the city is also supporting the county's community ambassadors program with a goal to inform, engage and vaccinate our community. You'll see that many community stakeholders participate in both programs, including the city of San Jose as a local agency. You'll, the city helped identified 583 and counting contacts from nonprofits, business associations, municipal and neighborhood associations. And we've identified over 100 community influencers to support us with targeted communications to our diverse communities. We look forward to augmenting the county's efforts to correct misinformation and LA concerns and regarding the safety and the efficacy of the vaccine, as well as share logistical information related to vaccine rollout and directly reach our underserved communities. And we are prepared to do this by utilizing different tactics such as social media outreach, influencer videos, leveraging our nonprofit community leaders and city employee networks and door-to-door canvassing. We also will work to distribute information and communication toolkits through all possible channels, including the San Jose ambassadors network as we receive them. So with that, thank you for your time and I want to hand this back over to, to move this along.
Thank you, Anne. We really do think that this ambassadors network is going to be key over the next 120 days as we work from the logistics trail, responsible for that last mile, to that important last inch of vaccinations. And I know that many of you on the council have been involved with the ambassadors group. I know there's some great trainings that have been conducted as well and will continue to really work in tight coordination with the county on rolling out an effective campaign to not only get the message out, but to get those, those shots to the last inch. So on the broader EOC side, the roadmap through the epidemic continues to guide our work. And over the past month, since our last COVID-19 update to the city council, here are a few highlights that I want to share from that roadmap team. We've reviewed and updated codes of safe practice in light of the stay-at-home order for key city services to ensure employee safety. We've supported our most vulnerable residents and businesses by conducting a rapid appraisal of food, sheltering and small businesses' needs and been responsive to the needs identified. We've increased communication with the public and our staff with an emphasis on clear messaging of the recent orders and services available to help through this difficult time in multiple languages in order to reach all of our community. Partnered with the county to understand our role in compliance, ensured all of our core inventories of personal protective equipment and gear are at a 30, excuse me, a 90-day supply or better. Continued our effort at housing and sheltering our unsheltered, including opening up and working to open up additional emergency housing sites. You'll hear more about support for small business and additional efforts around food over the winter break a little bit later in this presentation. So I'd like to now shift over to a deep dive into the coronavirus response and relief supplement appropriations act of 2021. And here to take us through what that means at a higher level is Benna Chang, who has been our lead of intergovernmental relations and really revitalized our, our work and function in that area, as well as then Andrea Flores Shelton, who leads the EOC's task force on community and economic recovery. And we'll talk in a little bit more detail about what that means for San Jose small businesses at this phase of our recovery. So Ben, go ahead and take it away.
Great. Thanks, Kip. Good afternoon, Council. Benna Chang, the city's Director of Intergovernmental Relations. As we all know, the political landscape in DC has changed a lot since we last reported a council. With the Senate going to a 50-50 Democrat-Republican split, this will make it easier for President-elect Biden to move his ambitious agenda forward. However, our lobbyists note that the margins are razor-thin in both the House and the Senate. And any legislation will require negotiation compromise with both moderate Democrats and with Republicans. We'll come back to council in the future to talk about how this landscape changes our federal agenda. But for today, we wanted to brief council on the stimulus and omnibus bill that Congress passed and the president signed during the lame duck session. HR 133 is a $2.3 trillion package that combines both a coronavirus stimulus bill with annual appropriations and water and energy bills. We've listed on the slide some highlights of what the bill funds in terms of the city's COVID response priorities, including food, childcare, broadband and small business assistance. While funding from these programs will not come directly to the city, they will go out to our partners and to the community directly and will in turn hopefully reduce demand on city services. Next slide, please. While the final package did not include additional direct local flexible funding like the coronavirus relief funds that we received in the CARES Act, it does anticipate receiving direct funding through two programs in this package. First is the Treasury Department's new emergency rental assistance program and the airport coronavirus response grant program. I should also note that HR 133 provides an extension to spend our coronavirus relief funds from the CARES Act. The new deadline to spend those funds is December 31st of 2021. Next slide. Want to spend a little bit more time today talking about the new Treasury Department's emergency rental assistance program. This new program directs funding to states and jurisdictions with more than 200,000 and population. The Treasury Department will be releasing final figures in a few weeks, but we have seen estimates from Congressional Research Service that shows San Jose's share of the program will be roughly 30 million. I also note that the state and the county will be receiving additional funding as well. The county shares estimated at $27 million. So roughly $57 million will be coming to the region through this program. The funds are available to spend until December 31st of 2021. And the Treasury Department is authorized to take back any unobligated funds no sooner than September of 2021. So they can redistribute funding to jurisdictions. And administrative costs for this program are capped at 10% of the worth. Next slide. So the legislation sets some parameters for the program, although we expect to see additional guidance come out from the Treasury Department to clarify the program and reporting requirements. The legislation says that the funds can be used for both back rent and forward rent, as well as utilities and other housing expenses. We can provide assistance for 12 months with an ability to extend for another three months if the city so chooses. Before we pay for any forward rent, we are required to assist with any back rent owed. And payment of forward rent is restricted to three months. After those three months, households can reapply to the program. Finally, the legislation allows the city to pay the landlord or utility directly. Next slide. So who qualifies for this program? Households that qualify for unemployment or can attest to financial hardship due to the pandemic, demonstrate risk of homelessness and have a household income below 80% of AMI can qualify for this program. The legislation also asks us to prioritize households below 50% of AMI or those who have been unemployed for 90 days or more. The program is not for people who are receiving other federal housing assistance. On the next steps, I wanted to give you an update that last Friday, the city did submit the required paperwork to the Treasury Department for this program. We anticipate funding will come to the city before January 27th. And as I mentioned earlier, the Treasury Department will confirm the award amounts in about the next two weeks. And a few slides, Andrea will talk more about the city's next steps on implementing this program. Next slide. I finally wanted to provide a quick update on the eviction moratorium status as well. So you might note that HR 133 does include an extension of the CDC federal eviction moratorium to January 31st of 2021. I'll note that the state of California's eviction moratorium is actually more stringent than the federal requirements. And at the state level, as the council knows, Assembly Member David Chu did introduce AB 15 to extend the projections of the state bill from January 31st of 2021 to December 31st of 2021. The city has supported the bill per council direction and legislative program. And we understand that AB 15 is scheduled to have its first hearing this week. It's an urgency bill, so it would take effect as soon as the governor signs it instead of waiting till January of next year. Last week, the governor indicated his support for extending AB 3088. And I think things look fairly positive, although we will see how the hearings go this week. If the state does not take action, the Housing Department is scheduled to come to council on February 2nd for local action. And with that, I'll hand over the presentation to Andrea.
Thank you, Benna. Good afternoon, Council, Honorable Mayor. Aligned with the community and economic recovery's objectives to invest, empower and partner, our team is planning, coordinating and operating the following activities related to the upcoming federal relief package, while also closing out the first tranche of the CARES Act funding for local assistance. So before I discuss the small business work, let me note that our team will administer the rental relief program under Michelle McGurk's leadership. We're putting a team together to deliver on this $30 million program. And we're committing 8.5 million of the 30 million to the county's isolation and quarantine program specifically related to the rental relief and utility support. So to develop this version of the rental relief program, we are getting input from the community around rental relief needs and assessing all the lessons learned from the previous programs, both through surveys and direct outreach. We're meeting with stakeholders and partners around developing a work plan to deploy the funds quickly and effectively. And our program implementation details will be shared with council at the February 25th study session. Last Friday, January 8th, council should have received an email toolkit that covered the stimulus payments, food benefits and eviction moratorium details. We will augment this with new information received, I believe, yesterday about the new mortgage payment forbearance request program that postpones payments for up to 180 days. We greatly appreciate you getting the word out to our constituents and EPIO is updating. Excuse me. Sorry about that. We have some tutoring going on there. We, we greatly appreciate you getting the word out to our constituents and EPIO will be updating the virtual local assistance center with these details. Also, in addition to the relief program awareness, we continue to seek information directly from our residents and our small businesses on the, on an ongoing basis, again, to inform our strategic decisions through surveying community needs. So currently we have the community needs survey open and this is an update to the survey we did in September. And it's a little more extensive. This is currently open and it will close January 22nd. So we have 10 more days and we would, we do need your help in pushing out this survey. It is available in four languages and was promoted on Vietnamese radio this morning. It is available in four languages and was promoted on Vietnamese radio this morning. Next slide. So more specific to the small business relief package, we want to update you on the paycheck protection program, which is funded at two hundred and eighty four billion. This is extending the PPP through March thirty first of two thousand and twenty one. The PPP changes include that it's open to businesses that did receive a PPP last year. And there's also a set aside for very small businesses with ten or fewer employees and for small businesses located in distressed areas. Restaurants, hospitality businesses can get bigger awards, three and a half times average their total monthly payroll, rather than two and a half times. And an important element is that it simplifies the forgiveness process for loans of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and less. This program is also, it is open January thirteenth tomorrow. In the Economic Injury and Disaster Program, Grant Program, there's two twenty billion available, and small businesses and nonprofits and low-income communities are eligible to receive ten thousand dollar grants. Those same groups that received a E I D L advance grant previously are also eligible to receive the full ten thousand if their award was less than the first round. So again, this is good news for those who participated in the first round and are eligible again. Finally, grants for shuttered venue operators for our arts and cultural communities, there's fifteen billion available to live venues, independent movie theaters, and cultural institutions, which is great news for our community. So to get the word out about these important opportunities, the Economic Recovery Team with E P I O did incredible amount of work just prior to and through furlough. We want to highlight and let you know how we've been getting the word out. There were nine email blasts in the last thirty days, which totaled two hundred and thirty five thousand emails. The good news is that we had an open rate of forty eight percent, which is two times the industry standard. We also spread the message through community-based organizations that are non-traditional business partners. We put the Business Support Resource brochure, we produced it and distributed it to over a hundred and sixty C B Os. Last week, O E D staff led a webinar on the California Relief Grant Fund. We had over five hundred and forty registrations with three hundred and forty four local attendees. So this California Relief Grant Fund has currently four hundred and seventy million dollars in it, and the governor in his proposed budget includes another five hundred million dollars. And those unsuccessful businesses, if businesses do not get a grant in phase one, they will automatically be entered in phase two, so hoping for some seamlessness for our business community. Finally, new data downloaded from the Small Business Association shows that more businesses in our city received a PPP loan the first time with over eleven thousand, eleven thousand businesses that received under a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan and another two thousand over one hundred and fifty thousand. So again, we're getting the word out, and it's creating results on the other side. Finally, I want to talk about after the outdoor dining closure order in mid-December, the P R N S Alfresco team pivoted to supporting small businesses, opening up their businesses to doing more outreach to have them understand what is available to them through the programs. There were seven hundred and twenty proactive touches to small businesses to get the word out again about loans, grants, and other businesses' supports. Those touches then resulted in four hundred inbound calls or emails directly to our helpline and emails. So we are getting the word out, and we are able to answer questions, everything from more requests for information to more complex issues related to small business survival needs. And after small business, I do want to circle back to the next slide, which is something that community and economic recovery continues to do. This is a snapshot of our COVID cases by zip code and neighborhood, which we're very proud to say our economic recovery will be publishing this on a weekly basis. I shared something similar in early December, and unfortunately, our hardest-hit neighborhoods remain, and the visual doesn't look much different from the last presentation. Emphasizing Kip's comments about our current COVID status in our community, what we're seeing is almost every zip code has seen a resurgence with more than seven thousand three hundred new cases reported in San Jose last week, and that's an average of one thousand fifty-two cases each day. And the total case count in the city's zip codes has now reached fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. So as we track this by zip code, we want to just give an example of nine five one one zero, which is along the Highway eighty-seven corridor. We saw a sixty-four percent increase in the average new daily cases from December thirty first to today. So again, that resurgence is very real. This information is key to meeting our three strategic objectives, again, of investing, empowering, and partnering and drives our prioritization process. I really want to thank our assessment team led by Zach Mendez with technical expertise of Pablo Hockey, who've created this new COVID tracking tool. And again, we will begin to publish this on a weekly basis. So on behalf of Michelle McGurk and Chris Burton, we want to thank the entire community and economic recovery team for the continued pushover the holidays and through the next relief package. I'll turn it back to you, Kip.
Thank you, Andrea, and I really want to echo the words of appreciation to the team. You know, the Congress kept us guessing about what was in, what was out until the very last minute. The president kept us guessing past the last minute. And so what for many people was supposed to be their first break in about a year jumped back in without so much as a grumble. And not only did the job of getting the word out, but went above and beyond to make sure that it was done in the right languages, in the right cultural context, phone banking, reaching out, always socially distanced and safe, of course, and making sure that our most vulnerable businesses in particular got the word about these important programs, some of which are first-come, first-served basis. So there was literally no time to lose. Very appreciative, Andrea, of your leadership and the leadership of the teams during what was supposed to have been a break for them. Speaking of break, the other thing that doesn't take a break is hunger. So I want to talk a little bit about our food distribution efforts over the winter holiday. And for that, I'll introduce two more of our fantastic leadership team. Jill Mariani, who some of you know we stole many years ago from Google and has been at the forefront of many of our innovation efforts and is now wholly owned subsidiary of Food and Necessities Branch, making sure that along with Dolan Beckel that runs. And then Amanda Serena, who has given heart and soul to making sure that the policies and approaches that we take around food distribution are actually implemented. They also have a partner with us today from Vegolution that I'll let them introduce, and we'll close out with this update around our efforts to make sure that people were fed over the winter break. Jill, all yours.
Thank you, Kip. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of public. My name is Jill Mariani, Deputy Director of the Food and Necessities Branch of the Emergency Operations Center. The Food and Necessities Branch was formed in March two thousand and twenty in response to Santa Clara County's request for the city of San Jose to take on countywide accountability and joint responsibility for food distribution during the COVID nineteen pandemic. All of our work centers around three core objectives. Feed our most vulnerable, maximize existing food networks, and scale for a widespread food crisis. Through the efforts of our partnerships and staff, we have so far avoided a widespread food crisis within San Jose and more broadly, Santa Clara County. Prior to COVID nineteen, the city managed about four thousand meals per week at our senior nutrition sites. Post-COVID, at our peak, we have grown to managing over three million meals a week across the county to address food insecurity. I'm joined today with our branch Distribution Operations Lead Amanda Carrera, who will provide an update on our winter holiday meal efforts. Amanda.
Thank you, Jill. As Jill mentioned, my name is Amanda Carrera, and I am the Distribution Operations Unit Lead for the Food and Necessities Branch for the Emergency Operations Center. Going into the winter holiday, we anticipated that, given the shelter-in-place ordinance and the rising coronavirus cases, that we would need to build additional capacity into our pipeline to be able to avoid long lines and food shortages for our most vulnerable populations. We had tapped in to some of that capacity to provide additional meals during the Thanksgiving break, and were able to leverage that experience going into the winter holiday, which we knew would be a much longer duration. We were able to provide over two hundred and twenty-five thousand additional meals to our most vulnerable populations over the winter holiday. These populations included seniors medically at risk, homeless, and low-income residents by working together with our community partners to provide support additional capacity. These partners have played a critical role in the success of the winter holiday meal effort includes Hunger at Home, Team San Jose, Bateman Trio, the Santa Clara County Office of Education, Revolution Foods, Vegolution, Sourcewise, and World Central Kitchen. I would like to hand it over to Emily Schwing, the Marketing Impact Manager at Vegolution, to shed some more insight into the impacts of the on-the-ground efforts. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, and staff. My name is Emily Schwing, and I'm the Marketing Impact Manager for Vegolution. Since October twenty first, in partnership with Off the Grid, we have been sourcing, packing, and distributing four thousand nine hundred grocery boxes weekly for the COVID San Jose Food Relief Program. Through this program, we have established what we consider the beginnings of a true local food hub, which allowed us to expand this program during the holidays these last two months. During November, during the holiday expansion, we were able to add another one thousand two hundred grocery boxes distributed in partnership with Loaves and Fishes and Martha's Kitchen. Then our big push came during the last two weeks of the year when we added an additional forty-eight hundred boxes on top of our regular distribution of nine thousand eight hundred boxes. In total, the November and December holiday expansion holiday expansion work resulted in an additional six thousand boxes going out to local seniors and families. We wouldn't have been able to do this work without the help of our amazing volunteers and councilmembers, Farza, who helped us pack our boxes on one of the busiest days last month. All of our products, produce, and grocery items are sourced from local BIPOC farmers in or near the Santa Clara Valley area. Every morning, our team of volunteers and staff meet these farmers at our packing site at Conservation Court off of Burger Drive to unload and set up for the day. While in conversations with these farmers, we've learned just how much business that they've lost because of COVID. And from a financial perspective, just within this expansion project, we were able to pay these farmers over a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, and that's on top of now what is more than a million dollars to local farmers through our work with Off the Grid. For this expansion, we relied heavily on our partners at Loaves and Fishes, Martha's Kitchen, and Hunger at Home for that final step of distributing the boxes to those who need it most in San Jose. We are excited to build our partnership with Off the Grid through March while learning how we can better establish a farm box food hub at Vegolution. Thank you for your time.
Emily, thank you so much for your leadership and everything that Vegolution and your partnerships are doing. And thank you, Jill and Amanda, for your relentless effort to make sure that we have this broad and deep partnership. So since we've covered everything from vaccinations to farm boxes, we'll conclude our presentation at this point in time and hand it back to our city manager, Dave Sykes.
Thank you, Kip, and thank you, team. So Mayor and Council were available for questions.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your great work. Really appreciate an awful lot of heavy lifting and a tough time. Really, congratulations to Carolina and your new role. We look forward to continuing to work with you. And thanks also just to echo Dave's thanks to Na for hanging on through this transition. We appreciate you continuing to serve. And thanks, of course, to the capital improvement team, doing great work every day. We have several folks who would like to speak. Councilmember Sparsa.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start off thanking all of the partners on the food distribution. I know many of us were in furlough, but there was an enormous amount of work that actually happened over the holidays, actually on outreach, on the ambassadors, on a lot of things, but also on the food distribution. And I just wanted to revisit that two hundred and fifty thousand number. That's huge. And I wanted to say it again out loud because the need is that great. And I also wanted to thank the partners, thank the Second Harvest Food Bank that has expanded their services incredibly much, and thank Vegolution and all the partners that are coming together, working with local farms. One of the interesting things was the catering drivers that have lost their jobs because there are no catering events these days are actually delivering food. So it's also a part of the economic recovery that we're going to be dealing with all of two thousand and twenty-one. So I wanted to thank those folks. And yes, I had a great time volunteering. And I understand that there's still a huge need for volunteers. It was a lot of fun. The food was beautiful. It was fantastic to see such fresh nutritious food going out to families that I know have nothing. They have nothing at home, and they're getting all of their nutrition from what they're getting in these boxes. And at the same time, we can support local farms who have lost their customers. And I wanted to actually ask Dolan on the food distribution. In my district, numbers went down, and then they've gone back up. And so at multiple sites in my district, and I wanted to see if we had any more any more of a sense of how things are growing or going up and down.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Councilmember Sparsa. Dolan Beckel, I'm the Director of the E O C Food and Necessities Branch, and Jill and Amanda are great leaders within my branch who did most of the heavy lifting over the winter holidays to mobilize those quarter of a million meals. We're continuing to see food insecurity increase. I mean, it is the bottom line. You know, depending on variations in whether one school in a district is open during the feeding period or they're directing him to another, you can see some of that variability. But if you look, you know, if you look top line across the city and the county, food insecurity is continuing to increase. And so we're not stopping. We're already planning for the February break, whatever you want to call it, the president's holiday or the winter holiday or the ski holiday. We're planning for the Easter vacation, the longer Easter vacation. And so we're basically continuing to scale our city and in some instances, county output to meet that growing food insecurity. But bottom line is, yes, it continues to increase.
And part of what we've done in collaboration with the County Office of Education is making sure that when sites close, we try to be and help them be as proactive as possible on letting folks know where the alternative sites are or what their pieces are. I won't say that's flawless, but the county office has been a great partner in that, and we've also were successful in increasing the amount of schools that continued serving over the break by providing them some different ways of support that they didn't have to ensure that there were a great, far greater number of sites at schools themselves than there would have been otherwise without this team's work.
Yeah, I wanted to point that out as well. We have learned so much since March sixteenth, and that is one of them. I just wanted to give that feedback. Earlier on in COVID, yeah, we had some learning that we did, and I did not get any complaints or any desperate questions because people were surprised. I thought that was very positive because people knew where to go. Because, again, you know, we still have folks waiting a couple of hours to get two boxes in many places throughout our city. I have quite a few in mind. So again, thank you because I think this is part of the work that we're literally keeping people alive. So thank you for that. I had another question, and Kip, I think this is a question for you. I had a question about our methodology in the reporting. So if you can go to the slide that has the numbers, the zip codes with the cases, and then there's the weekly report. I'm a little confused because I do go to the county site pretty regularly, unfortunately, to look at the cases. And I wanted to ask about the methodology because I'm a little confused because according to the county site, it's a little bit different. It's nine five one two two, and then it's Gilroy. And then it's actually nine five one two seven and nine five one one six, and then it's nine five one one one. So not on the weekly. There's the slides aren't numbered, but I guess it's twenty-four of twenty-eight of the big presentation. but it's, I guess it's 24 of 28 of the big presentation of the one that's in Granicus. It has the rank one to one through 10. And then it has
I think, I think that slide has been modified a little bit, so I'm not sure that I actually have that to pull up. I apologize. I'll get that real quick. I'm going to ask Andrea to jump in on the methodology while I'm finding that, both because she's closer to it and also because that was originally her slide, so she can speak more clearly to it.
Okay, yeah, I just, so I was just, I got really confused.
Okay, I'm happy to take this, Councilmember Esparsa. So one, we're only including San Jose zip codes, so that's why you won't see Gilroy. Even though, so we're taking a San Jose focused approach on our zip code analysis. And then we're looking at, there's the cumulative, you know, cases over time. And then there's the rate cases, right? So we're looking at that. And then what our team is going to do, and you'll see when we publish this, we just gave you a snapshot today of what you'll see, is that we're doing a ranking that puts together cumulative, but also what's happening week by week. And so we're creating sort of a, again, it's all sourced from county data, so anything that we have is what the public would have or you would see. But we're taking, we're going to go a week at a time. And then we'll put together sort of our ranking of where we think our priorities zip codes are. So it's cumulative, but it's really kind of putting an index together. So we kind of say over time, we're concerned about these areas, whether they're emerging or they've just been maintaining as the highest. And you'll see the highest zip codes haven't really changed. But we're going to index it into sort of our top 10. So we will have a more thorough methodology sort of glossary that will accompany the dashboard.
Okay, yeah, I'm interested in that because the county has the cumulative case count, the population of the zip code and then the rate per 100,000. And, and I was kind of going back and forth and still confused on how we figured out our ranking. And, and I don't want to obscure the fact that we have some zip codes in the east side and portions of downtown that are just overwhelmingly higher. 95122 has over 6,000 cases, 95127 has 5361. Then it's 95111 at 5288, then it's 95116, right? So I don't, the, the numbers are so much higher than everywhere else. I don't want to lose sight of that fact. But also given the conversations that we've had around vaccines and being able to go into census tract that gives us the flexibility as a city to respond to maybe emerging areas. So I get, I get that flexibility and I think it's smart. But these numbers are overwhelming and growing. Still, unfortunately. Somebody asked a question on social media like, hey, did you know anybody that's gotten COVID or, you know, and, you know, pretty much everybody, right? Family, friends and neighbors. It's still growing. And then I had another question about the ambassadors and I know a lot of work went into that over the holidays. And I had some discussions at that time. And one of the trends that was happening in mid-December, I'm still hearing in the community, which is that folks still don't want to get tested because our message, and by our, I mean our collective message, not like city or county, but just all of the messaging, the state, it's very confusing about what is there for them. I mean, I think it's confusing to us because look at, we had to do this big PowerPoint between the federal government, the state, the county and us. So it's confusing. So my question is, how are we going to simplify that messaging so that we can, people, so that people understand that there's something there for them? And then I wanted to pivot into the isolation support program.
Yeah, I actually was going to go there as well because it's interrelated, right? I think, I think we need to do a couple of things and we're trying to work with the county on this. I'll ask probably Carolina to weigh in a little bit as well and perhaps Lee. But first of all, we need to make sure that the, and Andrea has a piece of it as well. Everybody kind of does. First of all, we need to make sure that the service that we're providing to people who are isolated is a good service, right? And that they actually know about that in the right time. And then we also need to reinforce with broader messaging so people understand that as well. And to your point, it's quite confusing at this point. And I don't believe that it's widely understood that, hey, if you test positive, we're going to provide you with support for housing and food and, and other things that you might need, that you shouldn't be hesitant in getting tested because you're worried about what happens when you get a positive. But it is extremely difficult problem to solve. A couple of things we'll do is, one is we will work with the county to fully fund the program to make sure that it's adequately funded and effective. And two, we are working on both through the ambassadors program and our own reinforcing that messaging. But I'll turn this over to Carolina, Lee and Andrea to add in from their, each of their perspectives respectively. Carolina?
Thank you for that feedback, Councilmember Esparsa. I will, I will let you know that a while back we brought to the Council the EOC Strategic Communications Plan, which included a lot of advertising and particularly targeted to our non-English speaking communities. I will tell you that one of the pieces that we advertised was a social isolation program. And we have some great data that we hope to bring to everyone, but I'll tell you anecdotally. I have heard from our county counterparts that they were getting up to 30 calls a day at one point. So when the ads went out, our community definitely saw the ads and they did call. I'm happy to continue to have the conversations with the county, Colin Haney and I, who are the co-leads of the EOC, meet with them weekly so I can take this up with them and we'll work on something collaborative.
That would be great. Yeah, and I'd like to share that. And I think there's an opportunity to work with the school districts to share it. I heard the calls were 80 a day, but, which is a lot. I just, the need is there, like, like food. We literally, you know, fed 250,000 people, right, over the holidays. And so the need is pretty great. So, yeah, so that would be great. I look forward to that. And I just wanted to address the, our partnership with the county on the much needed isolation support program. I believe the county revised their report to include the latest numbers on the utilization of that fund. Do you have any more information on that?
Thank you, Councilmember. So we actually meet with the county housing staff of the EOC and City Manager's Office. We'll be meeting with the county this week. Part of our to-do list is actually to watch the isolation and quarantine report that county staff gave the Board of Supervisors today. And I know they did commit to daily, if not weekly, a dashboard of statistics, which is something that we've been talking to the county about so that we can better understand who and when our own population is being served. So they were able to spend coronavirus relief dollars by the end of the year that we had sent over. And we are working with them on ensuring that that program has funding from now until end of April. And then again, if needed, May and June as well. So that'll be something we bring forward to you as a council in the coming weeks.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously I'm a believer in the program, but it only works if we get that assistance to people as quickly and seamlessly as possible. And, and I do, it's one of the things that I think is so important in our response to COVID, particularly in the surge. I think nothing is more important than testing and, and I have to give credit where it's due, our county, particularly once you look at other counties in the state, our county has done a phenomenal job in getting testing, whether it's the permanent sites or the pop-up sites, getting that out to people. But to me, the isolation is the next step. And that we do that on a consistent basis so that folks who are living in overcrowded living conditions or whatever it is, that they get, get that and don't pass it on. I had a number of friends, you know, I, that have gotten COVID over the holidays because somebody needed help. So a neighbor delivered food to that house to help them. And then guess what? The neighbor gets COVID and then gets, gives it to another family. And so again, that isolation support, I think is a critical, it's as critical as testing in my opinion, but great.
We absolutely agree with that. And just as we've been really working to refine that program and, and kind of better sync with the county on that. They've been nothing but collaborative and county leadership with especially Key has been great to try and get us the information we need. So I think they do see a sense of importance and timing here.
Andrea, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
You know, we worked with them at the, towards the end of, or middle of December to see. And we're really confident that they used up the allocation, you know, based on the good outreach and refining their processes to connect people, the need to, to the demand. And then we're continuing to work with Jackie on the next conversation. And as I reported, we will use 8.5 million of the rental relief money to support that program moving forward.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
You're muted.
Rookie move there. My apologies to Blair Beekman and other members of the public who wanted to speak and I neglected to go in public first. Mr. Beekman?
Hi, happy second new council meeting for all of us. I had a few items. I wanted to speak on the orders of the day a bit that I understand what you were speaking to. So I, I wrote a letter about orders of the day. It spoke to procedural items about a certain few issues and how we can talk about the consent calendar. You know, singularly to talk, public comment for when items are pulled from the consent calendar and when items are talked about as a whole, the differences. I hope we can address that in the upcoming consent calendar. For this item, I have just a few simple words to just speak on the COVID-19. As part of item 2.2 and the approval of ordinances this week, I thank you for all the public comment on paid sick leave last week. It seems COVID-19 is going to continue to be difficult for at least a few more months. I hope this January, we're all preparing to continue previous good rent forgiveness ideas and practices for all sides. As, and what, as what seems to be described in this COVID-19 item today, the city of San Jose is being given their own autonomy and beginning funding money to help with and help decide how rental forgiveness can continue. Thank you for this. I hope this can offer help for all sides into at least this summer, if not for this entire year. How much time? I've got 21 seconds left. I guess, you know, I really want to apologize for, you know, I really saw the death, the, the rise of COVID this, this past October. I'm sorry I didn't know how to practice better, you know, death count statistics. Hopefully I'll be doing that in the following months. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin Hedges.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I am very concerned that we need to do anything we can to help stop the spread. And I agree with Councilmember, as far as I believe it was, it was saying, we need to support people who have COVID so that they won't be spreading it. And I saw in the newspaper, I don't know if it's under this item or not. I missed part of the meeting. But I think it's very important that we provide as much shelter as possible and reopen the hotels for people who are unhoused and have COVID. I was just reading that they have raised the threshold of who qualifies and they're actually kicking people out on the street because they don't have enough health problems. And we shouldn't be triaging people like, you know, that, I mean, we shouldn't need to have that level of triage that we're actually kicking people out because they only have three deadly conditions instead of four. And they have pre-existing heart and lung disease. And you would think that would be an automatic needs to shelter. But it isn't. And someone needs to look into this and we need to provide enough shelter that they don't need to triage that strictly for the motels for people at risk of getting COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, returning to the council, I just had a quick question before we go back to the council questions. Really about the eviction moratorium, I understand we would be bringing it back if nothing happened at the state level and I expect something will happen. But if we come back on February 2nd, why wouldn't we bring it back on January 26th? Knowing that there's so much anxiety around that date and getting past that date certainly wouldn't help.
This is Jackie from, Jackie Morales Ram from the Housing Department. And the state legislation preempted local localities from taking any action until their moratorium ends.
But couldn't we take the, the action to be effective as soon as the date of the expiration of the state measure? So there would be no issue with preemption. We just have it in place, ready to go.
I'll defer to the city attorney's office.
If that's the direction from the council to have that be ready to go. If the, if there is another action, we can do that.
Okay, there's no legal reason why we couldn't at least vote on the 26th so that way we'd be ready to go.
We can probably, yes, we can either set it as an alternative like we've done before on something. So that if there isn't, if they don't act, it'll be one way and otherwise we can take another path, but we can
I'm guessing we can take that up at rules, but that's certainly what I would like to be able to do. Thank you. I know, thank you, Jackie. Councilor Davis?
Thank you. And I first want to thank the team for the update on food distribution. I was out in the area with Hunger at Home over the holidays as well. Didn't see Councilmember Esparsa. We must have been there on different days when you were at Vegilution. They're all Vegilution and Martha's Kitchen and Hunger at Home are sort of all in the same area because San Jose Conservation Corps has been generous in providing space for all of them. And it was just really great to see that, that coordinated effort and the camaraderie amongst the, the nonprofits that are all helping to feed our families. They were providing meals and produce as well as gifts that were donated by, by our local businesses at the same time. So I got to help load the cars and it was, it was just a really, you know, festive atmosphere for the holidays and just a really heartwarming way to spend a morning. So I do want to put in a plug as well. I know Councilmembers as far as also already called for that, but I want to put a plug in for volunteering. They, there is a great need and with all the organizations. And I know Silicon Valley is strong. You can sign up there and sign up for any one of the number of nonprofits that are helping to feed our families. So I want to thank everybody who's been involved in that effort and everybody who is watching, who has volunteered as well. I also want to thank the Housing Department. I know I've been bugging you about the, the mortgage relief. In addition to the rental relief, so I really appreciate you getting that information together and disseminating that out adding it to the toolkit because I think it's just really important. There are a number of individuals who are at risk of losing their homes and maybe don't have the information. As, as has been mentioned, it's really hard to get all this information because it's coming from so many different sources. So as, as much as we can be kind of the clearinghouse for all of that and pushing that out, I think it's fantastic. And I, I also really want to thank Kip and the team for the San Jose Ambassador Program. At least the original, I'm still on my Neighborhood Association email list. And I know the, the original email came from Kip, so I want to thank you guys for that. I do have a couple of questions. One, I think is going to be a quick question. So I'm going to ask that one first and then the, then the second one will maybe be a longer discussion. Regarding the, the vaccinations and the change that, that just came out today, is that meant to address, one of the issues that I've heard is that, that's holding up kind of the assembly line of getting shots into people's arms is the, the amount of paperwork that's required? Is, is this new directive to, to give it out to anybody over the age of 65 meant to address that issue so that we can distribute more shots more quickly? I don't know, Kip, if you want to answer that question or?
I'll try. I'm honestly trying to get my hands around the rationale. And I think it's a number of things. I think it is, I think some of the concern with because each of these approved vaccines at this point are two dose vaccines. The way that they have been administered to date is, 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 is really tightly ensuring that that second dose is available. And so that has constrained the number of people getting the first dose because you were sort of holding back or budgeting doses for that second dose. And so really this switch from the federal government does two things. One is it basically stops holding back on the second dose. And two, it jumps and broadens the category to this 65 and above, plus the preconditions. Honestly, I'm still just trying to wrap my head around what that means and what that doesn't mean in terms of, of, of our work. And certainly the county is, is, is having to absorb and figure that out as well. I, I will say the complexity of this, one of the things about it is that the science is not clear on what happens when you broaden out the dosage, right? So that we, we know, for example, if you were to get, say you've hit your 50th birthday and you get your shingles vaccination, you have some leeway and when you get your second dosage. And we have science and data around us to tell us that you'll be okay with that. Pfizer and Modena have been very clear that the clinical trials that they ran were based on the exact second dosage at the exact timeframe. And so it may be that you can extend the second dosage time and be okay or have some limited immunity. We just simply don't have the science on it. So it's kind of a, not a direct answer to your question, but I think what it does is it does open up a broader piece, but it doesn't necessarily simplify things because we still have to figure out as people are coming in whether they fit the categories. So it's a very complex and fluid situation. And, and again, we're, I'm sure the county is going to issue some communications on what they think it means and we'll defer to them on, on how they're going to be approaching that new approach to Phase 1B, but it does make things more complicated in the short term.
So does, I'm sorry, I guess I didn't understand, um, opening it, opening it up. You, it sounds like you think opening up the Phase 1B will actually put the second dose at risk? Is that what you're reading on that?
I, I don't know enough to have a definite opinion. One of the things that we have to watch is to make sure, part of the reason that not all of the doses are, were going out all at once is that some of them were being held to be part of the schedule of the second dose. And so my understanding that it is that part of this direction is just to go ahead and first dose everybody and worry less about the second dose. So that's, again, that's 20 minutes before this presentation. I've only read what the New York Times had to say about it, and I'm not dealing with the logistics. But, but again, bottom line, it just shows you what a fluid situation we're in.
Right. Okay. Do we, um, so I, I understand that you had, you had mentioned that the, the fire department is helping to administer vaccinations. Are there other city staff or city resources, locations where vaccinations are happening? Or have we made those available to the county?
Yeah, we, the task force that Ann leads, the purpose of it essentially is to be a support wing to the county. So we're working through potential vaccination points. They've, they've just put in a request to us and we're working through to give them some options for, for vaccination points. We are having our fire department examine the possibility of scaling their capacity and see what it would take to do that. Uh, we're in conversations about becoming our own potential official clinic so that we can independently give vaccinations. But all, all of those efforts are going on simultaneously in parallel with the idea of essentially doing whatever we can to support and expand the capability of getting more, more of the vaccinations out to the people who need them. So we're hoping that, that we can leverage, lend significant effort to the county over the next weeks and months in particular. And, and we'll do that in any way that, that they need and they request from the, the Ambassador's Program to finding sites, to, to supporting with the actual administration of the vaccine, again, following their lead. And we expect it to be a significant effort over the next 120 days in particular.
Thank you, Kip. And, and as Councilmember Esparza mentioned, at the same time as we're doing that, we're still, and the county is still needing to put resources toward not only contact tracing, but even testing. So we have, there's a walking and chewing gum situation going on while people are very tired. So I let us know how we can help in, in any way. I know we, I've had, uh, even retired nurses in my district reach out and, and ask how they can help. And, and there are some that are already volunteering at the fairgrounds, some with testing and some with vaccinations already. So, um, I know that is, that is available. So thank you. And then my next set of questions are for Jackie. Well, I know we didn't get into this, but one of the public commenters mentioned it, and I had some questions on, um, an update on sheltering. It's gotten colder. It's January and as well as hotel capacity. What's, what's going on with, with that? And has, did the stimulus that just was passed, is that going to change this, this situation at all? Will we be able to open up more shelter beds?
Um, so since, uh, because of COVID-19, we've actually opened up 800 new beds, which far exceed what we typically would have opened up during this particular winter season. So last year we opened up 60 beds, just to give you a comparison. So we have more shelter availability than we ever have had before, and we're operating a hotline where people can have easier access to those beds as well. We don't have, frankly, additional financial capacity or staffing capacity to increase what we've been working on now. So right now we've only had one shelter provider actually come back who's been available to continue to support the shelters. And we're using up that capacity. So I think we're limited on funding. We're trying to actually relook at how we're operating the shelters now because we don't have access to shelters in the evening. So in order to ensure that we're maximizing the utilization of what is available, we're trying to come up with a different structure that would allow people to have access during the evening and would free up more beds. So I actually think there's more current capacity in the system. We just have to figure out a better way to operate it and so that we can actually provide that capacity to people. So we're not, technically, we're not even at the full capacity with the 800 beds, but we have structural issues we need to work out. And we're hoping to get that worked out this month.
Great. So the next time we have, uh, I know we're kind of going on an every other week basis for updates on, on this, can we have an update on, on the shelter capacity and the next time we get a COVID update?
Sure. Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then it would also be helpful to know about the hotel capacity as well, especially for homeless individuals and, and getting into hotels for, for at-risk individuals. Thank you. And then this question is for Dave. We, given all of the information about, about testing and, and contact tracing and vaccinations and coordination, especially with our homeless population, do we have an, any idea on whether we're going to have or when we're going to have our next joint meeting with the county?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. So I do think that's in the works right now, at least in terms of trying to schedule a, a timeframe. And I don't know if Tony or Gloria know if we've made any progress on that, but I do know there's discussion going on to try to establish that. Maybe you do, Lee.
Yeah, I, I do know that we've officially reached out just to ask for a timeframe, um, and they owe us that next week. So we will loop back. I know there was some, uh, communication back and forth between our offices before the break, but we again reached out last week. So hopefully we'll hear something next week and, and bring that date to rules to hold it.
Thanks. I'd just like to suggest that maybe while things are so, um, crazy, I don't know a better way to describe it, that we maybe have quarterly meetings together. We, we tend to have these very long COVID updates and it may be just as, it may be a little bit more useful to be able to directly communicate amongst the supervisors and the council members, county staff and city staff. So I think, I, I'm just putting it out there that I think quarterly meetings would be very helpful.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember.
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Foley?
Thank you. And I appreciate the report from Kip and Dave and, and others. First, I want to acknowledge that Chief Knopf is retiring. Thank you for all your service. I don't know if you're on this Zoom call, but I truly appreciate it. And thank you for staying on to the end of the month for your retirement. I, Dave, I also want to thank you for acknowledging the unsung heroes this year, this time. The PRNS members of the Central Service Yard, the ability or the, the flexibility they had to have to put up the tape to take down, to show that our playgrounds weren't being used. And then to remove the tape and then put it back up is a lot of work with all of our playgrounds. And that was just one of the jobs that they had to do. So I appreciate that. The numbers are, are alarming. Uh, it, it's funny, actually, well, not funny, but I received a call from a media call on a totally different subject that the city council is going to be facing in a couple of months. And they asked me if that issue, and I'm not going to talk about it right now, if that was the most important thing facing city council. And I sort of laughed and said, absolutely not. COVID is the most important thing, and it will be until it's over. And it's not going to be over for a long time. We have people dying. We have people getting sick, recovering with long-term health effects. We have, then there's the economic impact that will take a long, long time to recover from. So I just want to acknowledge the impact in the, it, it, while it affects all of our districts and all of our zip codes, I acknowledge that it affects the downtown zip codes and east side zip codes to a much greater extent and that we should be and are allocating as much resources as possible to the areas of highest need. So I, I know there are deaths occurring all over, but the impact in Councilmember Esparza, Councilmember Carrasco's, downtown Peralos, Councilmember Peralos, and Councilmember Aranis's area is much greater than the impact in District Nine. But the impact personally to everybody is an individual thing, and it does cross all, all boundaries. I have some questions about the vaccine rollout. It's, you know, it's really exciting that the vaccine is being rolled out, and I'd like to get a little bit more information. And Kip, I realize you just got the information now a couple hours ago, but can you give us more details on the, the phases now? It's, I had heard the governor saying he wanted to drop the number, the age down to 50. The federal government had, so as releasing all of the vaccine, what more can you give us? I, I understand it's, it's new and it may even change, but what do we know what the distribution will be? Or who, let me put it this way, who will be the target populations now?
I, I'd actually like to request a, a cycle on this, if you will, and I'd be happy to follow up with, with, with information on this because it, it is so new and so fluid. I mean, we were working, working to provide what we hope was a clear picture today over the course of the last week and the weekend. And, and again, just the news at the federal level today has been so different that I, I don't want to speculate on something that's not my, my area of expertise and knowledge. I will say, you know, the, the Phase 1A piece, which is about 145,000 people, right? So it's the, it's the healthcare workers, it, it's those, the, those, the long-term nursing, skilled nursing facility residents and service providers, you know, that's been the focus. And we, we had expected to begin to move into Phase 1B as soon as the end of January here, just in a, in a, in a week or so. And so we will be moving into 1B. What I don't feel like I can say with any coherence at this point is what is the prioritization within 1B? Is it all three, both phases at once? And, and how are we doing the outreach? The one thing I will say in terms of ambassador and community outreach, 1B is the first time that we're really going beyond what I would say are professional or contained groups, right? Even with the, the nursing facility, you know where all those facilities are. You know who all the residents are. But Phase 1B gets us for the first time into people 75 and older and people 65 and older. So regardless of, of how we end up doing it, it's a general public one. And so getting the messaging right around that is going to be critical. I'm also really, you know, we've seen issues in lots of other states where they've opened up early in terms of reservations and fraud and how that's done. So we'll want to sync with the county, get on message with them and communicate back with you quickly and as clearly as we can for you and your constituents on, on what Phase 1B looks like. But I'm really going to look to Dr. Cintershy and others before, before I speculate on that.
Okay. I, I appreciate that, Kip. And, and I, we, of course, we want to get accurate information out as quickly as we can to our communities. Uh, and, and we're just, we're just not there yet. So, and I, I'm not being critical. I just understand how quickly this is changing from really minute to minute. With regards to the, the continuing the vaccine rollout questions, then I would encourage us, well, how will we notify our seniors and reach out to them? And one target area might be our senior mobile home parks where we can, because a lot of those folks are not mobile or they're, are isolating by, uh, because of their age and underlying health issues. So do we have, is our, when we include our communication plan, will we be including specific targets for different populations and how we're going to reach them?
Yes, we will. We'll have different sort of priority customer segments, if you will. Sorry to be techie about it. And, and understand sort of what those personas are, right? And, and the senior population is going to be obviously an extremely high priority. We're going to be workshopping some of this with the county over the weekend and, and taking a, a look at the long arc of the 120-day approach and then working backwards and giving the team the space to see what the focus is next. I would say your short answer is how will we, how will we be reaching out to seniors every way possible, right? We know that, that simply broadcasting is not enough, social media is not enough. This is going to be one where you're going to have to have not just communications, but engagement and campaigning, right? You're going to, and, and I'm speaking to the experts on this. You guys know what, what retail campaigning is all about. And it's, it's, it's about getting out and literally knocking on doors and talking to people. And I think to get that last inch, especially into our senior population, that's going to require that. Because we're going to have to, you know, we're going to have to go into, to, 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 to folks who, who may be concerned about their documentation status and explain to them that, that, that they, this is not putting that at risk. Folks who, who, you know, may need to hear the message in, in languages that they think in that may not be English. We're going to need to get that message out, people knocking on doors who they're comfortable with and who are trust, they're trusted by. So I think all of the above is the answer on how we reach seniors, phone calls, phone banking, knock and talks, reaching out to the mobile home associations themselves, et cetera, et cetera. And I, we're, again, Ann has assembled a strong team on that. We are working with the Conservation Corps, City Year and others to, to, to talk about what a ground game looks like. And we'll be working, workshopping with the county over the weekend to get a clearer picture of, of how we're going to roll this out for these different customer segments. Excuse my tech.
That's great. And count on the council offices to help you because we've got, uh, ground games that we try to employ also, and we all have, you know, office hours or events where we're trying to reach out to our community. So anything we can give them will be really, really helpful. Okay, I'd like to move over to the, thanks, Kip. I'd like to move over to the, the supplemental funds. And I have some questions about, uh, those. First, I want to say that, that the PPP funds are being allocated, as you've heard, and that any business who benefited last year from them cannot benefit this year unless they see a reduction in their revenues of 25%. So if you, last year, that wasn't really the question. This year it is the question. Do, can you document 25% reduction? Now for our restaurants and our shuttered business, that's an easy thing to do. So I just want to throw that out there. And our community banks, some of our smaller community banks are already pushing out applications to their customers to fill out those applications and get them in on time. So, uh, council members, if you have any influence with your, with your database, and I know you do, let them know they should contact their small commercial or their small community bank for the small businesses to work on those PPP loans because it is first come, first served. Um, I want to talk about the rental assistance. Want to talk about the rental assistance funding and the, the, the 12, 25 billion, but then our allocation is 30 million. And how is that? How are we considering allocating that 30 million? I guess that's a question for, okay, Michelle? Or Jackie or whoever.
Michelle, okay.
Yeah, I'll take it. Michelle pop up?
I'm sorry.
Thank you so much for the question, council member. We are, we are in the very early phases of understanding the program requirements. I mean, that's what we learned from the coronavirus relief funds is that we need to understand what guidance the Treasury Department will come out with. And hopefully that with this program, they will come out with guidance and stick to it. So that, and, and there are a number of organizations at the national level advocating on behalf of cities and local jurisdictions to ensure and, and on behalf of the constituents we serve to ensure that the program can be flexible and meet the residents where they're at. So we will join in that advocacy. Ben and, and Jackie and I have been talking and Andrea quite a bit about that. We've learned some really good lessons and we made our coronavirus relief fund program very flexible, working with our partners at Destination Home, Catholic Charities and Sacred Heart and all of their sub-granties. So we are taking lessons learned. Destination Home in partnership with our Office of Racial Equity and Sacred Heart are convening some of their key stakeholders next week as they did for the coronavirus relief funds. And we're going to be listening. We're going to be listening to what our residents need. We're taking notes on what you guys are hearing. Feel free to email me and Jackie and Andrea with thoughts. You know, if you, about problems you heard and so forth. We want to make it easy for our residents to access these funds. Because sometimes when the federal government creates a program, it's not some of the documentation and the, and the requirements they put on the program are very hard for somebody who's living in, you know, three families in a house and they're renting, you know, a room or a garage and they don't have traditional leases. So we're trying to make it super flexible. We learned a lot and, and our program was very flexible last time. We did a lot of self-certification. So the residents could access the funds and but this is much bigger. This is, you know, this per, we spent $8 million in coronavirus relief funds on, on rental relief. And this is, you know, more than three times that much. So, so we're looking at how we can scale and, and work with our partners very quickly. And we're also looking at all the different federal requirements.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think Andrea was saying that, or could have been Ben, I'm sorry, taking notes furiously that back rent had to be paid first and then forward rent for three months and the four and all went to the landlord and not to the tenant. So will we be coordinating, I guess we'll be coordinating that with our partners much how we've rolled it out, rolled out rent relief in the past? Only bigger scale, I understand.
Yes. And we, you know, with the coronavirus relief fund program, we first tried to ensure that we could pay the landlord because we know some of our small mom and pop landlords are also hurting. And we want to make sure that they benefit. But in the cases where there were not the simple relationships between, you know, where someone is renting an apartment and they have a lease, we made arrangements so that we could pay the tenant and then they could pay, pay the landlord through the partners that we worked with. And, and we worked really hard to do that in a way that would meet the federal requirements. And we learned a lot and our plan is to, you know, look at this legislation. It does say that the tenant can be paid if the land, the language is a little tricky. But if the landlord will not accept payment or some other, so there's some advocacy going around, going on to ensure some flexibility in the guidance from Treasury and to make sure that it's very tenant focused in that.
I appreciate that. And that's, that's what's important is keeping tenants in their properties and so we don't increase the homeless population. We need to keep people housed and I'm, was really happy to see the amount of money being allocated both to the city, but then the county that will benefit us as well. So I, I appreciate that. And I know I'm after, I'm over 15 minutes, but I'm still going to go on because I don't do that very often. Can I have, there was a question, someone mentioned forbearance, and I didn't hear that forbearance was a part of this. Is the federal fund, the supplemental funds, are they paying homeowners to stay in, to allow them to make their mortgage payments?
No, they're not.
Okay. So that was, I made that note and that was.
It's from the previous Legends, CARES Act legislation that allowed it. And it, there were some extensions and we're just pushing that information.
Okay, great. That may be it. Let me go through my list of questions. I think most of the rest have been asked. And one other thing, I'm really glad to see that there is funds being allocated as it relates to grants for live venues and theaters. And when you know the specifics on how those funds are to be allocated, please let us know because those folks haven't been open at all and they're really, really hurting. And we want to be able to get our art houses and our performance, our, our kids and whoever performs back on stage. So I, I really was happy to see that, you know, I know people are talking about our federal deficit going up it with, as a result of that and, and how that's not a good thing. But I happen to feel that a bailout and this, these funds are really, really critical and we need to utilize these and have these funds available. So I'm glad our legislature, our Congress got to get, got it together and, and approve these funds. And now we can allocate them when they're available. And with that, I thank you for all the, the work you're doing at the EOC. I know it's not going to be over for many, many months and we're going to be coming at here, but I hope our numbers of deaths start to go down, although I fear they're going to continue to go up until we see the results from Christmas and New Years and other activities. But hopefully we can all stay safe. We can stay socially distancing and take care of our next door neighbors as much as possible. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there's, Jackie has an answer to a question that was raised earlier both by public comment and one of the council. So I wanted to give her a chance to bring that information forward.
Sure. There was a question on whether the county was kicking out people that were living in the motels because of the new determinations or priorities for housing people in motels and they are not. So, and we've always had a prioritization in terms of who gets to go into the hotels. And as they've gotten more experience regarding who's most impacted and whose health is most impacted by getting COVID-19, the emphasis is on housing our most senior homeless residents. So if you're in the 68-ish, eight range group, and we'll have that detailed to you all. There's an additional requirement to demonstrate a health condition. But again, people, once they're in there, do not, are not getting kicked out because they're not meeting the new screening.
Thank you, Jackie. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Crossco.
Thank you. You know, and, and of course I want to start off by, by thanking all of our, all of the members of the EOC team. I know that you're working diligently to make sure that our residents are, are well represented and taken care of, whether it's, it's fires during the summer or floods or now this incredible situation that we're facing. And I have quite a number of questions and, and some of them have already been answered by, by the questions that were posed by Councilmember Asparza and Councilmember Foley. But, but I do want to do a couple of follow-ups. And so on, on Monday, I reconvened the Equity Health Task Force, which is, you know, a wonderful collection of nonprofits. And of course, also the county is present and our new co-chair is County Supervisor Chavez, which is going to be a wonderful addition because it gives us an opportunity to have a very direct conversation with the county and be able to, to have a, you know, answers to our questions given to us very, very quickly or be able to get resources in a, a matter of a, you know, a very quick timeline. But, but a, a couple of things that I just wanted to clarify and, and one is around vaccination. So, so 2020 was all about testing, testing, testing and making sure that our community was being tested. We know whether it's in the graph, whether it's from the results that we've seen, we know those zip codes where our families are being most impacted. And, and, and of course, the graphs only reemphasize and confirm those numbers. I, I'd like to see in the future, if you don't mind adding a slide, a cumulative number versus just the rate. And the rate is great, but I think seeing a raw number really helps us to see a bigger picture because we, you know, when we start talking about distribution and when we start talking about resources, you know, many of us here like to work with facts and figures and numbers don't lie. And so, you know, some of us are representing districts as Councilmember Foley pointed out. And thank you, I really do appreciate your advocacy and your, your allyship. But we're, we're fighting for resources and I'm very, I, I have to say, I'm very, I feel very fortunate to have a council that appreciates what some of us are really dealing with. We're working seven days a week, like some of the EOC members, and we're working around the clock. I have a team that works seven days a week, by the way. I've had, by the way, comments made by other council members that say, well, what are you guys doing? I, I don't understand. But that happens to me from another council district that doesn't have the kind of impact that I have. And so I understand it and I appreciate it. And, and, and how lucky are those neighborhoods where they don't have to deal with families who are hungry, children who are disconnected and families who are literally dying. But I have that. Councilmember Asparza has that. There are neighborhoods in Councilmember, well, everybody has that in some form or fashion. And, and, but if I were to look at certain districts, you have little dots of it. My entire district is the, the dot of it. And so I'd like to see included in these presentations, a cumulative slide so that everybody understands what all of us are dealing with. And this is not a pitty-potty commercial. I just think that as we all represent every single resident in the city of San Jose, regardless of whether they voted for you or not, we need to know who we're representing. And we're representing the city of San Jose. So I just wanted to ask you to please kindly do that because as I'm sitting here on the task force, you know, we're looking at, at countywide numbers. And so the other thing that I wanted to mention is, you know, there's very little flexibility, by the way, in terms of how the vaccine distribution is going to go out. We get the mandate from the feds, the state gets it from the feds and then local jurisdictions get it from the state. So there's very little flexibility. I anticipate that as this continues to roll out, we're going to get more and more flexibility. The reason is this, there was a goal, a very lofty goal in December. We didn't meet it. And there was a guesstimation as the numbers were being rolled out that if we were to vaccinate every single day, it would take us six months to catch up and meet that goal that we had in December. So it's going to be very difficult to vaccinate everyone, including that second dose in the county. In fact, they're saying that if we don't ramp up, it'll take about two years, 24 months to be able to do that. So I anticipate that we're going to get more and more flexibility as, as we begin to really understand what it entails to vaccinate 2 million people. But I will say this, that as we begin to open up that criteria, it is incumbent upon us. And it is our responsibility, each and every single one of us, to look to see where are people dying? And make sure that those people are pushed to the front of the line. Because we need to make sure that those individuals are protected and safeguarded because they're dying. They're dying. And so I want to see those numbers in the next, in the next presentation. So thank you so much for that. And then, and then the other is, so I, I want to talk to Anne, who is at the head of the vaccination distribution team. And so I truly appreciate, is she here?
She is. I think she just might be unmuting herself just a second. She was having some technical difficulties earlier, so just checking in.
Well, I'll have her catch up. So, so I, I'm really glad that we have someone that is bilingual and I imagine bicultural that truly understands vulnerable communities. I want to know what we're doing in terms of reaching the Spanish-speaking community who we know are among the most vulnerable community, are essential workers and those who are dying at a higher rate in the entire county, but especially in the city of San Jose. And so who on your team speaks Spanish and is part of the vaccination distribution plan?
One of our leads on that is Eric Rodriguez, who both has campaign experience, is bilingual, bicultural, born in Puerto Rico, but very much a San Josean now, and phenomenally gifted at everything from data analytics to running campaigns. So he's one of our key leads. We also have support from our EPIO office and the director, Carolina Camarena, who has some pretty damn good Spanish as well.
Awesome. Yeah, I, I know Carolina very, very well. Carolina, by the way, congratulations on your new position. Great, great choice. And I, and thank you so much for being part of this because the distribution piece of the vaccine, the vaccine distribution piece of this whole plan is going to be critical if we're going to start to slow down these numbers. But, but truly if we're going to, if we're going to, it, it's really the only solution that we have to this pandemic. And, and we don't know whether it's 100%, but it's the only real tangible solution that we have currently. And, and, and we need to make sure that our Spanish-speaking community, as well as all the other vulnerable communities, such as our Vietnamese community, our elderly, are really understanding the ramifications of not getting vaccinated. And then we also know that, that even those who voluntarily get vaccinated, there's a, a natural 20% drop-off when there is a second dose. But we need to make sure that they know that they're signing up when they sign up for that first dose, that they're going to get that second dose. So there's going to have to be a lot of messaging and a lot of outreach, a lot of campaigning. So for those of us who are, have been involved in campaigns, welcome to the campaign world, folks. We're doing it again. So, so for our new council member, Matt and, and David, don't take off those campaign shoes because we're hitting the ground again and making sure that our folks really understand what it means to get that second dose and how important it is because that first dose isn't enough. But this is what I wanted to say. The ambassadorship program was meant for this. It was meant because there's a lot of misinformation. There's a lot of misinformation that's going out there regarding the vaccine. And so the ambassadorship program was meant to go out there because there's this surge that's happening due to the, to the holidays. And if you, if we look back and we start tracking, we saw that the numbers began to surge once October hit. So the big Halloween parties, then it was Thanksgiving and then it all went to, you know, and so, and, and so we're waiting to see. And so and and so we're waiting to see what our numbers are going to look like after after this New Year's. And by the way, in the Latino community, La Rosca. La Rosca is is, I don't know what it's called in in English, but it's when the the three wise men visited baby Jesus. It's Tiffany, yes. And so, thank you for the Catholics in the house. So 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 we know that no one was going to cut the bread in virtually, you know, and no one was going to mail baby Jesus. So there was going to be gatherings, and so we're waiting to see what those numbers are going to look like. And so so the Ambassadorship Program was meant to go out there and be able to message culturally, linguistically appropriately and demystify the fears around the messaging and around the vaccination. Because our communities are being targeted, unfortunately, by anti-vaxers and all kinds of other stuff that's going on. So I'm leading the Spanish-speaking Ambassador Group, which is not going to be an easy task, I have to tell you, because because there's just a lot of a lot of misinformation that we have to, you know, that we have to muddle through. But 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 I just want to make sure that 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 our our EOC staff is using your council districts. And I have to tell you, aside from Kip, I've not been contacted. I've not been contacted regarding how to get out there, how to reach out there, and what you can do to access my team so that you can use the expertise of what I consider to be have an excellent team that understands the east side probably better than nobody else. And I've got a partner, Maya, Councilmember Sparza, Councilmember Arenas, Councilmember Peralis, and Councilmember Jimenez, who understands that district better than anyone that I know. And this is in addition to, of course, the nonprofits. But why are you not accessing us? That's the next question I have. So anyone that wants to take up that question, because I'm going to ask you some hard questions. I want to know why you're not accessing us. When you're going out there trying to decide how you're going to use lessons learned to distribute the funds for rental assistance, how you're not going to access us to distribute grant money for business support? How, why is it that you're not accessing us to figure out the messaging for vaccine distribution and and et cetera, et cetera?
I'll take that, Councilmember. Excellent question and and great points all along the way. I would I would say I will distinguish two ways. One, I I absolutely believe we are deeply going to need to work in deep partnership with you as we roll out more of the ambassador work in the vaccination campaign. Each and every one of you know your districts better than anyone else. You are the expert.
Right there, Kip, because I've heard this since day one, 2020. And so I'm going to tell you, I've heard that, and I still have not been contacted regarding my expertise.
I I I've reached out to you personally to ask if we could see.
I know you have, but I've talked to my other council colleagues, and they have not been contacted.
Okay, well, I would be happy to sit and do a workshop with each and every one of you. Part of what we do is we do 3.1. I also would very much like to tap into everybody's expertise on this. And I think perhaps doing a workshop with either you directly or the Chief of Staff, we'll have to make sure we have don't have Brown Act issues, but we can do a way to gather that expertise and do a sync with you all on approaches, especially to the campaign, vaccination campaign. On the operational issues, we have been working through our nonprofit partners and through the other folks as our eyes and ears on the ground, both conducting surveys, focus groups, and working with them as we take on the operational issues, since we take our policy direction from from you all. But I think in terms of the vaccination campaign, we definitely need to double down on that. And I will commit to convening and working with each and every council member who would like to to work with us and sitting and doing a listening session to understand how we can tap into your expertise and experience through the campaigns, period. So I'll make that personal and professional commitment to each and every council member who would like to be heard. And I agree with you, your staffs have deep, deep knowledge that surpass what we have at this point.
Okay.
Can I jump in for just a moment, Councilmember? I just want to ask a question that's relevant to the question you just asked, which is, with regard to the vaccination outreach, who is running the campaign? Is it the city or the county?
The county, the county is in overall charge of of the vaccination work and the vaccination campaign. And so we have been working to support their leadership and to also support through the ambassador, identifying the ambassadors, how they want us to be rolling out the message.
Okay, so we're assisting, but the county's running?
Correct.
So I just wanted that context to be clear about.
Yeah, and no, no, and this is, this is, this is a fact. And and the county's in charge of rolling it out and making sure that that the distribution takes place. But we're, but the city is sitting on different committees and subcommittees representing the city. And so so it is incumbent upon the city representatives, whoever they are, to be able to have that kind of information and connection with their their district representatives so that they have that kind of information as they're sitting there, giving input at those subcommittees. But you got to take back that information and be able to say, as 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 the player of the biggest city in the county, let me tell you what's being reported back to me. Let me tell you what we're hearing from our representatives. Let me tell you what Councilmember Sparza is seeing in her district. Because the county doesn't know. The county is just collecting that information. And so we saw this, the reason why the task force was created or why Councilmember Peralis created his task force for business support was because we didn't have a seat at the table with the county originally. So that's that's my feedback on on that. So so thank you so much, and and I never saw Ann come back. But anyway, so so I I just hope that that we we have a very strong Spanish-speaking message that goes out on the different networks and the different tools that we have available to us, whether it's for business support, aside from going on in Vietnamese radio that we're using Latino, Spanish-speaking specifically, radio, TV, what have you, so that we can also reach out to our different communities. So I want to make sure that that's getting out there. And if you have any questions or you don't know where to access, again, you've got a hope, you've got 50% of the council here that can help you out with that. The the other question I have is, you know, one of the concerns I have about about the rental relief, I don't know if I saw that in the presentation and zoomed through real quickly. Did I see there again that that a lot of our population are not going to qualify if they are not documented? Or if they don't qualify for some of the other federal support programs?
I just want to clarify that slide. I think the government doesn't want to pay for the same month's rent using federal dollars, different federal sources. And so they have sort of that requirement. But I know Michelle McGurk and her team were on a Treasury Department call, and she might have some more details on that piece.
Yes, Councilmember, we, so there's there's sort of two issues. The first issue is our families that have already received some sort of federal aid. So if you're living in Section 8 housing, that's really what they're getting at with that. They don't want to duplicate that if you're already getting federal aid. But we have clarified that if you've gotten, so for example, if you went to Sacred Heart and you got some coronavirus relief fund aid back in October, and now you need some relief to cover December and January rent, that would be eligible because it's not duplicating the funds. So that's one piece that will be helpful for our residents and for our nonprofit partners. And the second piece is that there is expanded access with the stimulus payments for mixed-status families now. So the $600, the $1,200. And we did include in the toolkit that went out to council last week, information about how people can access those stimulus, those direct stimulus payments. However, those federal payments do not, if a family is not a mixed-status family, but the family is, you know, completely without documentation, they may not be able to access those funds. And those are, you know, some of our community partners are helping families access those funds. And we want to keep providing you with information to share with the families. However, with rental relief, the legislation is silent on documentation status. And we are going to proceed as we did with coronavirus relief funds and assume that if it is silent and then, you know, we don't ask, you know, we just process and help all of our residents in need. And we are sure that the next administration, you know, is going to be a little more friendly on this front.
Great, thank you so much, because we we all know, we all know what a horrible situation people are finding themselves in. This is, you know, when we saw the report from Jennifer Loving, this is by far the biggest stressor that families are experiencing is the inability to pay their rent and the stress of being evicted. And so for for those of us who are sitting here, trying to decide what kind of programming we're going to be planning out, the idea of having an increased number of individuals who are houseless is is daunting. And so we we absolutely do not want to see, especially families, children, out on the street. So figuring this one out is 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 critical. And 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 by far, other than the health component of the pandemic, housing and meeting people's most basic needs is, if, in my opinion, falls squarely on our shoulders, trying to really figure out how our residents are going to fare through this. So the last thing I I just wanted to to point out, you know, it would be great for for us also to have a slide kit or whoever is composing the the data. I just got some some numbers that I think are really important for us to see. The county as a whole has a positivity rate of, I think it's 9.7%, the county as a whole. The community care clinics, which happen to be in some of the most impoverished areas in the county. I have, I have several of them in my in my district. I know that Councilmember Sparza has several of them. I know for sure is in the downtown area of San Jose. They have a positivity rate of 17%. 9.7, 17%. Mexican Heritage Plaza. Mexican Heritage Plaza, which tested just last week, it went from 200 tests up to 800. They had to turn away 200 individuals, 200. They're now getting assistance from the county so that they can start testing up to 1,000. And that's just in one day, because they only test one day, Wednesdays. They have a positivity rate, by the way, Mexican Heritage Plaza, for those who don't know, is in my district, on the corner of King and Alum Rock, beautiful center. I invite you to come and and watch this in action. Positivity rate of 27%. I'm going to pause for effect. 9%, 17%, 27%, folks. That really gives you a snapshot of what's happening in our our impoverished districts. And I'm going to say this again, our, our impoverished districts, our impoverished districts, not mine. Our impoverished districts. So with that, thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start off by just thanking all those folks that, Dave, you took your time to recognize early on in this meeting, especially, I think it was the Service Yard Group in in PRNS, as well as Carolina Camarena for her new position. So congratulations, Carolina. I'm really excited about having you in that position. And 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 I know what you can bring, so so I know the the good work that's that's lies ahead of us. And I know that you're going to, you always write us to the occasion, so it's it's going to be great. So thank you. And I have some questions about about the numbers. And I know this has already been discussed by a couple of my colleagues. But when I looked at Slide 5, I think it is, and we got a a different version, a different presentation, Kip. So when things change, and I recognize that things are going to change at the very last minute, if if we could just have that email to us, and that way we can pull it up quite easily from from our email.
Good idea. Will do.
Thank you. On that slide, there was a, it looks like there's fewer folks who are getting tested now. Even though the the contraction is 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 higher, the new the new cases are higher, but there's less people getting tested, even though I know that Councilwoman Carrasco, you said quite the opposite, and it might be true in some parts of of our city or county. I wasn't sure if this is just San Jose or if it was the whole county. Either way, it doesn't really matter. If there's fewer people that we're testing, then that kind of skews the numbers in terms of the zip codes of contraction, or at least the some of the zip codes that that might be getting relayed in our presentation. And so I wondered if we could take a look at some of the, and you know, this is morbid, but but maybe some of the zip codes of the folks who have passed away, the folks who are in the ICU units, so we can take a look at those communities that are really in dire straits, might have the strain that is a little more severe or for whatever underlying conditions that COVID has just impacted them differently, or a combination of both. I just wonder if we can have a deeper conversation about that. And when Councilmember Carrasco was talking, I was, I just remembered that I had asked for a more in-depth conversation about COVID. Because every other week, we, and we spend a great deal of time on this because it's obviously, it's really important, and we need to. Although, if I feel like we're not doing justice to some of these conversations because we skip one week and then the follow-up kind of gets lost or things just kind of don't line up. And I'm not, I I think our team does a really great job of following up, I think, in general. It's just, you are all doing so much. We are all doing so much. There's so much workload. And I get how some of these details can get lost over the course of time. And so I wonder, Dave, if we, if you have already contemplated on doing a study session in January, so that we can give some of that, some of that feedback that, Kip, you were discussing with Councilmember Carrasco about, I think, a workshop or workshop format. But I think this really deserves a study session. And in that study session, we can have some of that feedback that you're looking for from each of the districts, and you don't have to set up an individual workshop for each one of us.
I believe we've requested and are working on a study session. And Andrea, can you remind me of the the timing of that for, because your request was a deeper dive into the community and economic recovery piece? And I believe we're working on scheduling that.
February 25th.
Yeah, thank you. And City Manager, sorry, did not mean to interrupt you, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Arenas, that that request. And I do think, as we talked about it after our last update, that we felt like January was going to be kind of a hard thing to pull off, so.
Thank you for reminding me, yeah.
But but not, but not forgetting about the the commitment to do it and the importance of doing it. So there's a full commitment there. And so we should have something coming to rules fairly soon that kind of schedules that out.
I appreciate it.
And just as a, just as a reminder too, we, I think we had said we were going to do that a little bit further on in February so that we would have a better indication of what, if any, money would be coming for state and local assistance. So we had the reason. So we had the resources available to present to you at that time as well, so that we had all the variables in place. So hopefully that'll shake out once Congress is in session and focused back on COVID past January twentieth.
Thank you. I think what you see, and I'm not going to speak for anybody else, but I think what I am observing in terms of pattern is some of the things that we get asked about. Either through phone calls or, you know, approaching us at whatever ways we have available to us. Some of us continue to do coffee hours or, or just have whatever interaction we have over Zoom or what have you. But we, we have in real time concerns from our community. And then I think by the time that we have, and those in real time concerns that get accumulated maybe over two weeks, a week. Over time and becomes now a pattern and we relay this back to you. I think what we see is, is what you've already accomplished versus maybe bringing us into the fold about the strategy. About what you're carrying out. And I think there is a level of frustration there regarding that. And, and that's not to say that you're not doing the right thing. And those strategies, I think, with more heads in the room could all, could only benefit, could only, you know. Benefit from, from two or more heads in, in the room. And also from, I think, from the feedback that we get in real time from our community. And some of the things that you might not pick up. Because people don't normally call you for all of their concerns. Residents continue, you know, the city kind of fronts everything, the county is responsible for, or we're responsible, or any level of government. We get all those calls and so we are sorting all those concerns to the right departments or the right level of government. But we get to hear the whole thing. And so, so for me, I think it's important not only to have the study session, to take a look at, wait, wait. To see what we are going to see in this new administration and for it to make sense within that timeline. But the, also the strategy of folding us into some of the strategies that you're taking on. As I hear some level of frustration from some of my colleagues. Because I think, you know, I, I don't necessarily understand the zip code methodology. And I think it, it requires some additional conversation. I could see how within the last seven days may look really different from an accumulative period of the last thirty days. And so, so, you know, and, and then the difference between what those zip codes look like and what we're hearing from our, our folks. Are quite different. And I think, you know, Councilmember Carrasco serves as the Chair for the Equity and Health Task Force. And she's hearing certain things slightly different. And so I think there's some value in, in folding us into some of these strategies before they actually happen. Before they actually happen, so that we can help inform, help develop. That's kind of the role we typically take, right? We, we, we are policymakers. And so that's the frame of mind that we have when we hear any of the presentations. We want to see, we want to be able to help out. And I think this is all in the spirit of trying to help out, trying to make this better. And so whether we do this through workshops or through another study session. I think that, that what you're hearing is that, that we want to be a lot more involved. As things are looking very dire straits for our city and for our county. And you know, the, the next question I'll ask is. We talked also about having a representative of the county at our COVID updates. And I'm not sure what happened with that. Is there, is there, is something that, that somebody followed up on about that? So we can have some direct answers to some of the questions that we have.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not recalling that. Councilmember.
So, I think it was Councilmember Sparza at one point had brought up bringing in a, a county representative. And then I think we, we, I don't know if it morphed into a joint meeting between the county and the city. The fact is that we need to have a really tighter collaboration between both of these bodies as policymakers. Being that we're the largest city in the county and kind of with the biggest bank from COVID resources. So I don't know if there was any follow-up. It sounds like this might have just gotten lost in, in some of the conversations that we've had.
I think it was translated into the, the joint meeting request. Lee, do you have?
Yeah, that, that's the way I understood it was a joint meeting. Because usually the Board of Supervisors is, is receiving the same report or similar reports on Tuesdays as well. So the way I took that direction was to kind of express the desire for the joint meeting, which we have. Not on kind of the individual, bring individual staff forward.
Yeah, well, you know, then I would like to request an additional joint meeting with, with the county. Being that they, you know, we're now in a different phase, well, back in phase five, but in a different phase in terms of vaccination. I think other folks have talked about vaccinations and, and, you know, Powell Stadium being one of the first sites where testing was actually happening. There was a little bit of a lag between actually getting the, the site ready to handle vaccines. And then I think we were ready to actually do the vaccines, but the sites and the logistics might have been an issue. I think we need to start discussing how to get ready at a large scale for vaccinations. And whether, you know, it's the single dose soon enough from Johnson and Johnson, who's, you know, going to release that hopefully soon, we'll knock on wood. That that does, or that, you know, we, we take one, one part of the two-part vaccinations from Pfizer and/or Moderna. It doesn't really matter. I think what we really want is to scale it up. And so I want us to be ready to discuss that and to logistically be, be ready for that. And I don't know if we already are, being that we already have these testing sites. How difficult would it be to transform some of these testing sites or a portion of these testing sites? Could those be vaccine sites?
And we, we've just recently gotten a request from the county to evaluate potential sites for vaccinations. And we've initiated that work. We have included the testing sites as obvious candidates as well, though the requirements are significantly different between testing and vaccinations. The cold chain that's required for vaccinations, especially the rigorous cold chain that is required for the Pfizer vaccine. Means that a site that might be perfect for testing might be wholly inadequate for vaccinations. In addition, you have to worry about the possibility of, of somebody going into shock or fainting or having all of the issues that, that we get. Whenever we just see needles and also get a vaccination. And so you have to have a, a different capability than you do with a testing site where people are just moving through and, and at a higher clip. So we are, we're currently doing that research. We're looking at both the testing sites that, that have been used. We're looking at all of the facilities that we own or have control or have relationships with. We're also looking at, from a list of pre-identified POD, Point of Distribution sites that we had discussed with the county previously. We'll be syncing up, and in fact, we're doing so earlier today with the, the county to seek to understand a little bit more about the range and variation of what they want in terms of sites. And we'll continue to work with them. So that's one of the four streams in Ann's Vaccination Task Force. And that work is, is currently underway right now at the analytical level.
When you say it's at an analytical level, it's determining the, the best sites for what we need?
Yeah, we're, but we're, yes, we're both seeking to understand from the county, what is, what are their criteria? We have a sense of what they are and then analyzing the, the sites against those criteria and also then broadening the sites as we go. So it's an iterative process with the county staff who will be running and administering the vaccination campaign. And we've taken, we're taking the first cut at, at putting a list of sites together for them to react to and inform us on.
Great, I'm really glad to, to hear about that. And I know, Kip, you talked about the wastewater. Telling us a little bit about who's really sick regardless of whether we have testing in some areas or not. Have we tested for that, the, the UK strain of COVID that seems to be more contractable? Has that been noted in our wastewater?
We, we haven't, we haven't tested for that, to my awareness, within our wastewater piece. And I don't, I'm not sure what the county is doing in terms of, I, I'm sure they are aware of and are looking for either the, the variant from the United Kingdom or the variant from South Africa. Both of which are known to be far more virulent or rather far more infectious than, than any of the previous strains. So I don't have any data on that yet. This, this doesn't distinguish between the strains, the way that we're doing the wastewater testing. It just tells us whether we have COVID or not, but it doesn't have that finesse to distinguish between the, the strains at this point for the wastewater testing surveillance.
Yeah, that would be something that I'd love to have come back to us to figure out, how are they figuring that piece out? I don't know what they would do if they take a look at the, whatever confirmed tests or the deaths. But it, we, I'd like to see if that's what we're dealing with locally here as well. And if we are, we need to shift, make some changes in terms of our outreach or the way that we connect with folks or our messaging. All of this just comes into play. The last piece that I'm going to ask about is. The, the, the childcare, their December, this is on page sixteen through eighteen of the PowerPoint, PowerPoint presentation. And it has the, the federal stimulus bill that's coming into some of the cities. I thought I, I read that it was ten billion in childcare. And so I'm not sure if that, if Ben maybe can tell me a little bit more about that.
So the childcare funding that the federal government passed is going into an existing program. Their development block grants that locally the state administers. So my understanding on the process is that families qualify for the program and then they apply to the state. And then the state sometimes provides vouchers or pays the childcare provider directly on behalf of that low-income family. So it's an existing, long-running federal program. And through the latest stimulus package, they dedicate additional resources into that program.
Okay, and I'm guessing that's the program that now Santa Clara County Office of Education is running on for the county?
Not sure on that piece, we can look into that.
Okay, it would be great to see how we can complement what is, or how they are going to carry this out. Maybe how we can all complement each other's efforts as we move along with our own childcare. It's, it's worth figuring that piece out. And I'll tell you, you don't see tears right now in my eyes. Because I have for a little, for a little bit, my, my mother-in-law does help me out to, to take care of my own children. But being here at home, I've got to say, and I'm just being absolutely honest, it has been just really difficult to do the kind of work that we're doing. And have children in your home that require your full attention. And a six-year-old telling a six-year-old to wait until after a twelve-hour meeting so that she can have some attention is just not realistic. And so I, I still consider myself blessed to, to be able to take care of my children here at home. My mother-in-law, who was kind of my childcare provider, it can no longer really did the job after COVID. She's just not the same, she's still recovering, we're all still recovering, but she's just not the same. I don't expect her to, to, to be able to care for my children in the same way. And so I can't imagine other parents and how they're dealing with this and potentially having to make some really difficult decisions about inadequate childcare circumstances for their own families. And so I really just want to put this in front of everyone. You know, go, going through COVID and having your children sick and having yourself sick. And then somebody who's elderly sick in your home puts a lot of strain on families, puts a lot of strain on resources. And so if I was in a different situation, I might be looking at, you know, losing my home because I just had a loss of, of money and lots of resources. And how do I catch up with that? If I'm not feeling well and if I'm not back at work, if I'm, you know, there's just so much that I'm really grateful that I am not having to encounter. And then I'm, I'm blessed to be in the position that I am. But that is not the case for the majority of our families here in San Jose and in our county. And so I want us to keep that really in mind as we make decisions. We, we need to make sure that our children and our families are at the forefront of all of this. Is, as, you know, there's a lot of issues that arise out of parents being torn into five different directions. And not having enough resources. And so I'd like to request that a childcare update be given at our, during our COVID updates. We sporadically hear about it every now and then. I hear about it through NSC, but I really like to have my colleagues hear some of these updates. So that they can also make their decisions based on all of the information regarding childcare. And, and let me tell you, our, our folks over in PRNS are doing just, just some fabulous work. We, we are getting children who probably have IPs, probably that, you know. Just have a lot of needs. And, and we have some great folks that are working in those programs, providing that. But they, they are completely. I think they really need our support in making sure that they are able to, to provide the, the, the support that they have to, to those kids under distance learning. Because it's very different from the net regular programming that we normally do. And so because we pivot, we also have to pivot with training, we have to pivot with support. So that our children don't get further behind in this distance learning gap, which I know we, we are. My, my, my own kids, I know, have really lost a lot of growth in these last nine months. And, and it really isn't fair. And so I know that being able to provide this for some of the families who don't have resources is the best that we can do in terms of our educational efforts. And so I want to make sure that those folks get the best support that they can, so that in turn that they support our children the best, in the best way possible. I'd also like to request that our sexual assault item come back. I have been talking about this since last year in March. And I have not yet heard about the different strategies that our police officers and are taking in terms of. Once they respond to calls. Obviously, there's different interactions that, based on the different calls. But I know with domestic violence and sexual assault, it is a very intimate type of, of. Of a call. And so I want to know, what are some of those strategies that they've adapted to make sure that they get the whole story? That they are, you know, supporting folks? I know that we have this intersectionality tool that they are now using so that they can figure out, you know, those intersections between sexual assault and domestic violence and sex work and human trafficking. And they're doing a great job in terms of putting those dots together. But there's, there's also some, some work or at least some update on my end, maybe not work, but maybe some information in terms of what is it that we're doing differently? For sexual assaults and, and being that yesterday, we, we was sex, was actually Human Trafficking Awareness, International Awareness Day. It, you know, we, we have to make sure, and I've already said this, and I don't know how many times. And I don't see it implemented in, in any of the strategies that we, that I hear in the COVID updates. And that is the World Health Organization already has proved in previous studies and previous pandemics, in this pandemic as well. That there's, the violence increases against women and young girls. And I don't see anything concretely done to, outside of what we are currently doing to address that. We know that information, but we, we're not taking any additional measures in, so I wonder why.
Somebody from PD on?
Question that I really want answered, Mayor.
Yeah, is there somebody on PD on the, on the Zoom right now?
Don't think we do.
Okay.
A representative from police on at this point.
Okay, why don't we come back to that? We'll get somebody from PD, you can respond to your question.
Will do.
Councilmember Arenas, and then we'll continue with your questions.
Thank you. And I think, you know, if we can take this offline and I can have a follow-up conversation as well, Dave. But if we can get an answer now, that would be great. But if we can get an answer now, that would be great. I don't, you know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but this is something that I've, you you know, we all have been advocating. All of my colleagues, my female counterparts, as well as many of all of you, as a matter of fact. But I know my female counterparts, because I can actually speak to them, we're brown acted in this area, that they've stood strong on this. And we have to make sure that our voices are heard and implemented in strategies and in the ways that we interact with our communities. And I think this is, this is getting lost in the shuffle and I want to make sure it does not. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, just a very quick question. I I think this may go to Kip. But, you know, there was mentioned, there's been mentioned on a few occasions, even past memos about the hierarchy of distribution of the vaccine and such and and how that comes from the feds to the states, then to the county. Something that Councilmember Carrasco said, Carrasco said earlier, that made me, I I guess, think to ask you a question. Something that I've suspected, but I I certainly don't aren't as tied into some of the discussions that are happening around the vaccine. But she she said something, and I don't recall exactly what she said, but something along the lines of as we go down the line of the hierarchy of the vaccine distribution and maybe the feds or just generally society having more difficulty in actually giving the vaccine to everyone that needs it. That those, some of those, some of that framework is going to loosen to a certain extent, I think is essentially what she she had expressed. And I don't know if that's, if that, if I'm capturing that properly, Councilmember Carrasco. I I think that's what you touched on. I guess I wanted to get your opinion, Kip, assuming that I captured it correctly. Do we, do we feel like some of those, the rigidity of who gets the vaccine is going to loosen as we move forward through through some of the distribution?
I think, I think, I think for me, the the way I'm thinking about it is that the key shift is the twenty first of January, right? The the way things normally work is you have the ACIP at the federal level and the CDC set the guidelines. Those are cascaded to the states. States generally have some level of flexibility. At the county level, you're you're at a much smaller and narrower restriction. And so I think, I think two things will influence the changes and and how tight or how loose those are. One is what the incoming presidential administration chooses to do, the Biden administration. And I think that once they set that, they will be more consistent for a longer period of time. But I think that could be a significant shift on the the twenty first. The other thing to the the council member's point is how quickly folks are able, the the manufacturers are able to scale and distribute the the vaccinations. My understanding, listening to Fauci and Ulsterholm, who is now on the incoming president's campaign, is that, you know, the the scaling was always intended to be one that you sort of, you wrap up the manufacturing capability. And once you're on the higher end, you are manufacturing a lot of doses. So the Councilmember Carrasco is correct that if you were to continue on at the rate that we are now, it's going to take years to do. So the question, which is still a question mark, is can the manufacturers live up to their projections on their ability to massively scale up the vaccinations and then distribute them? And then the complexity becomes down to the state and the county level of can we then get those shots in the right arm? So I I've got to say, I I've never been involved in something that has a rate of change of change like this pandemic that we're in. And, you know, I I mentioned briefly, I did have some work at the federal level and actually the world government level on on public health campaigns. I was Peace Corps representative to a couple of 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 national, national, international bodies on this. And, you know, normally it's something like the guidance around distribution is set and stays the same for five or six or 10 years at a time. So to have the this kind of guidance changing on a daily or weekly basis is unprecedented in 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 my my experience. And I think, I think we're going to have to play improvisationalist too strong a word perhaps, but we're going to have to be very flexible in in how we respond. And and I think the piece that the, one of my biggest takeaways from Councilmember Carrasco's point is that it is incumbent upon us to be thinking about, I think you said it yourself this way, Councilmember Jimenez, and it stuck with me. Those who are, those who've been in front of line for death cannot be in the last in line for the vaccination. And I think that that is a very compelling piece, whatever the guidance is from the federal, state or county level, that that we we need to do our utmost to make sure that that those who have borne the brunt of this vaccination, excuse me, this virus are the ones who are first to receive the vaccination to the maximum extent possible. So I I I really say my crystal ball in this is limited, but I do think the change of administration will be significant. I expect there to be some more consistency with the new administration, at least on database work. And time will tell. And I think by March, we will have, say, February and March, we'll have a clearer understanding if the manufacturing capability and distribution capability is at the level that the Pfizer and Moderna and others say, or if that's going to be lagging behind. Because at this point, it's more about the distribution and less about the manufacturing, from my, from my standpoint, in terms of of what the lag has been.
And and so. Can I, can I offer just two more bits of information that may be helpful in response? One is, there's very active communication right now between large city mayors nationally and the Biden administration around potentially a direct allocation to cities. And there are small number cities that already get the allocation for other reasons. But that that could obviously open more opportunity, obviously, to have contact directly with residents to get the vaccination. I think the other factor that really weighs into Kip's description of the of the choke point in distribution, which is, you know, there are other vaccines that are in the queue potentially. AstraZeneca has been approved, I know, in Mexico and India. I know that Johnson Johnson is potentially on its way as well. And these do not require refrigeration. In the case of Johnson Johnson, it requires a single dose. And so the requirements around distribution are going to be less stringent, I would expect. And therefore, hopefully, enabling us to scale more quickly, whether it's the county distributing or individual private providers or whatever. So I'm sorry to cut you off. I just wanted to.
Well, I I think that's good information. I wasn't aware of that. So thank you very much for that. Can I defer to Councilmember Carrasco just before I ask?
Yeah, and and the only thing I also just wanted to mention, so that the other council members can weigh in on this, is as as we're scaling and as we're we're really looking at our distribution plan, one of the things that's going to be really, really critical is making sure in whatever capacity we have to to really apply pressure and make sure that the private sector or the private insurances, you know, Kaiser, Sutter, Blue Cross, whoever it is, and especially because, you know, we have relationships with our insurances that they do their part. If they don't do their part and and our members are ending up in the public healthcare systems, then these systems get overtaxed, overburdened. And guess what? The folks who are most vulnerable, who only depend, who depend only on the community care clinics, VMC, the public healthcare systems, then they end up getting pushed off to the side. So we need to, in whichever capacity we have, to apply that kind of pressure. We must use whatever leverage we have to ensure that they're doing their part so that, so that our folks can continue to use the systems available to them. So so we we've got to make sure that everyone understands that this is an all hands on deck and and that those private insure insurances do their their part as well. But the last thing what I wanted to say is, you know, in terms of opening up and and this framework becoming a little bit more flexible, you know, it it is not, it has not been uncommon in some areas throughout the state where individuals who were supposed to get the vaccine didn't show up or didn't sign up or didn't come through. And it's been heard where two hundred, three hundred vaccines doses had to be disposed of. And so there is conversations of in those cases where those opportunities now open up to individuals who may not have been in the queue, where then suddenly that becomes a little bit more flexible. Now, in Santa Clara County, fortunately, there has not been one single dose that has has been thrown away or that has been wasted. But but it has happened, and I know for a fact it's happened in Los Angeles. It's happened throughout the state of California where you've heard of two hundred doses just being dumped because they can't be re-refrigerated. They can't be out. So in that case, it's not a lot, but there is some flexibility in that, in that. And so there's opportunities.
Thank you. And and just to conclude, I just have another question. So I guess, given the, given what the mayor said and, you know, given everything you said, Kip, you know, the the easing of the the restrictions around who gets the vaccine or not and where, what tier they they're in and such. Has the city actually sort of stated a very clear position as to who we think in our respective city should be in line when these vaccines, if and when the loosening occurs and how we go about distributing that? Have we, is there something formally that we've sort of laid out that would guide us, assuming that happens? Are we prepared for that?
I think we've, you know, the conversation that we've heard from you all has been very consistent in terms of of making sure that our vulnerable residents are prioritized and that those people who otherwise wouldn't have access to it through their healthcare system and who might face barriers are the ones that we should pay a lot of attention to. The other half, I think of your question is, is we're we're actually spending a lot of effort just trying to figure out who within our own city, small C, the city organization is next in line and making sure they're properly prioritized. So that the the, especially since the initial phase one A and at least the way phase one B was initially rolled out, it was primarily internal. And those, those who's in and who's out has been changing again on a daily basis. So we've, we've got a team that's working to clarify our internal prioritization of employees, first by what we understand is within the guidance. And then secondarily, in terms of any advocacy we we might have, that same team is also looking at what we understand will be the community, our understanding of the community prioritization and and making recommendations are of, are there any things that we should be advocating for? That team has not come to a final recommendation that we've had a chance to debate or decide within the context of the EOC yet. So we don't have a formal stated position, but this is where your input into here and in other places is very useful as we, as we try to to make that determination. Again, with inside the city, it's a little more technical. Outside, it's 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 both technical and values based. And so we're we're trying to to do both at the same time.
And so I guess, you know, I submitted a memo, I think it was first two rules, and then went to went to the full council on December fourth, essentially throwing out some language and and some ideas around this. And I know that that's when we had the conversation around the collaboration with the county and how we were, you know, patiently waiting on the sidelines, waiting to see, you know, how we can be best utilized as a city. Do you think there's, I mean, well, I guess the first thing is, do you expect that there is going to come a point in time in which you, the administration, the city administration is going to come forward with a recommendation, very concrete steps of of who the prioritize, how the prioritization process is going to play out for us to approve and give guidance on that and give approval on that? Is that going to happen at some point?
It's very much the county's plan. So Lee, can you help me out on this a little bit in terms of?
Well, I mean internally here in the city.
Oh, in terms of, in terms of employees? Yeah, okay, I I'm sorry, the capital C versus a small C.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. But but that's assuming, I I'm asked that question, assuming that we have a little bit more autonomy as to, you know, the mayor mentioned, for example. I wasn't aware of that, that there's some discussions with big city mayors and maybe cities specifically getting a a pot of sort of vaccines. And so in the case that would happen, I guess that's why I'm wondering is, do we foresee a time where you all, maybe with with what you've heard, are going to bring forward a plan of a distribution plan of sorts?
Yeah. Thank you for the clarification within. So speaking of the internal employees, we'll be putting that plan together. And at this point, it's it, the the way we have it proceeding, which we may change, the way we have it proceeding is more of an informational to you as after we work it through all of our internal processes and coming from our HR and our interpretation legally on what we can and can't do. And so we will put together, here's what we think we qualify for and then would be communicating that out both through our employees and and to you as we go. We we are obviously always open to take direction from council if that's not the appropriate way to go, but that is our current path forward.
Okay, so so safe to assume that if a council member, the mayor, whomever, or a group of council members submitted something, you know, and ideas as to how that prioritization process should take place, not necessarily even within the city structure, the city employee structure, but citywide, certain zip codes, census tracts, things of that nature?
Well, as as we get to citywide, that that again is, is, we are following the councils, excuse me, the county's plan. And so we don't have a a vaccination plan in terms of a prioritization of where the vaccinations go. We are beholden to and following the the county's direction on that. So I I think that's probably good. Go ahead, Lee.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. I mean, we've actively and regularly communicated with the county, Councilmember Jimenez, forwarding your memo to them, forwarding the various task force recommendations. I think that's why in in Kip's report, you know, when we talked about vaccination, vaccinations, a a great deal of our community would be vaccinated through the existing hospital and healthcare system. Knowing our at risk population also needs to be vaccinated and very quickly is where the counties standing up those resources to do that internally, whether it's at the fairgrounds or other sites. So when we're reporting out on ambassador program and trying to find those sites, that that is part of us trying to support some of that work. So, you know, I think as as we come forward, we will make the vaccination thing a much more regular part of three point one. But any, any issues that are brought up here or whether through the memorandums that you did, we've been actively communicating those with the county. But it very much is a county plan and it's quite frankly heavily regulated and and changing rapidly by the state and federal government.
So so can maybe I ask a question to the mayor? Sam, assuming some of that takes place, some of the work that's happening in the city, the city of San Jose gets a direct allocation of vaccines, is the county still going to dictate how we disseminate those vaccines?
Well, the state and the county have already set the the order. Actually, the federal, state and county authorities already established the order. And I should say, really, it's above the county, really. It's really the state. So we're not going to run counter to the state mandates. And that's assuming, of course, that we choose to take this on, because I know we don't want to be creating unnecessary friction in trying to to implement the county's desire to get the vaccination out. But if we took it on, we'd still be subject to the same sequence that the county's subject to.
Okay, I didn't quite understand that. Okay, that that make, that makes sense, but that that then just suggests much less flexibility, less than I anticipated, given.
Yes.
Okay, but but I think, you know, just just to conclude, I still think it's worthwhile, assuming there comes a point in time where there is more flexibility as to who's going to get the vaccine that that we as a city have a plan, so we don't get caught flat footed, assuming something like that happens. So we have a sort of a a citywide, city of San Jose prioritization list of of the areas, census tracts, whatever it may be that we want to get the vaccine as soon as if and when that happens, right, just to be prepared. But anyway, thank you so much for all the work. Thanks for the work, Mayor, and wonderful questions by my colleagues. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to folks who haven't asked yet, and then I'll come back for folks who want to come in for a second round. Councilmember Pras?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I wanted to actually highlight one point, which was the Health and Racial Equity Task Force that Councilmember Carrasco is leading. Had a really good presentation from the county in regards to some of the questions that we're we're talking about here, right? And and I just want to reiterate the point of I do think that we need to be coordinating a joint meeting to where we can actually have that conversation together. You know, I'll say it again, it's been said so many times, we know that the truth is, right, as it within the county here, not only are we we over half the population, but we have the core areas that are impacted the most. And and I think you hear the passion from Councilmember Carrasco because she's dead center with that. And yet I think there still is this feeling of a disconnect, whether it's, you know, with within our own end or on our own side, our own staff. But I think more specifically because we know so much of this is being led through the county, just the, I think that that importance of having that that collaboration, even in in an understanding of what's happening, I I'm just looking at, not to knock on the slides, Kip, that you're presenting, but just to look at some of the slides. The slides from the task force meeting yesterday were, for me, at least, a little bit more coherent in regards to just a better understanding of what is is rolling out. And and just seeing that we're sort of duplicating some efforts there, I think there is, you know, a lot that could come out of 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 a joint meeting. And granted, as you point out, Kip, these things are changing rapidly. So, you know, I don't think we expect anybody to be perfect here, but certainly one of the things that I think we should be doing better that we have not done is is being able to to communicate directly with our counterparts on the board of supervisors, but more specifically to be able to have that joint presentation where we're getting some county staff presenting some of this data and some of the realities of. presenting some of this data and some of the realities of what's happening and, and being able to, to maybe directly ask some questions of them as well. And so I do think that that, that could be helpful. So I just want to double down on, on that, that request. In regards to the presentation that you did bring up, one of the things that you mentioned was the, the capacity of, of the ICU beds and the shrinking. And maybe I don't want to put it up, but there was the, the, the sort of, how many beds are being utilized for COVID patients versus how many are being utilized for potentially traditional ICU patients, non-COVID related. And, and that non-COVID ICU bed capacity or ICU bed usage was shrinking, as you pointed out in there, which is the blue. Is this, you know, safe to say that these individuals are staying in, in a, a non-ICU bed? Or are they going into the overflow beds? What, what sort of, what's happening? Because I think we have to assume people are still getting into car accidents, right? People are still having heart attacks. There's, there's all sorts of reasons why somebody may end up in, in an ICU bed, strokes, right? And so where are these individuals going as this, this, you know, pattern here that we see continues?
That's an excellent question, which I'm not qualified to answer, right? This is exactly where I think it would be useful to have the county's expertise on board. They run the, the healthcare system, they understand how they're managing the surge and what they're diverting, what they're doing in lower grades, what's going elsewhere, because it's, it's, you know, I think your question is intuitively extremely powerful. It's not that people are suddenly stopping having accidents, right? People aren't stopping having cancer, they're not stopping having liver and heart disease. So what's, what's happening with that, where it's going? And I'm, I'm simply not qualified to, to, to answer that and I would be remiss to speculate.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I think, and that's one of the things that, as I've had some, some conversations, borderline arguments with individuals that, that maybe are arguing the importance or the need for masks or even their, their understanding of the vaccine and the pandemic itself and the impact. We know we still have a lot of individuals in our community from elected leaders all the way on down that don't necessarily believe in this as a crisis. And, and one of these is in regards to talking about the capacity when people look at, wow, this is, you know, there, there's not many beds being taken up by COVID patients, even when there are, right? There's still got to be more capacity. I think that many of those individuals don't think about the fact that ICU beds are there without COVID, right? They're there on a regular basis because people need them. They need to be in intensive care for a number of reasons. And, and I personally think back to, to my best friend, actually in high school, got into a really bad accident and he was in ICU for 30 days and he would not have lived. They gave him a 50 50 chance and this is a healthy 18 year old, just from a motor vehicle accident. And, and when I look at that blue line shrinking, right? I think of who out there in our community, right? That because our numbers are increasing with COVID use of ICU beds, who out there in our community gets into an accident or whatever it may be that would drive them to need an ICU bed to live, to survive, might not get it and what's happening. And so I appreciate, you know, the, the response that this is not necessarily the area of expertise there. But that's concerning, right? That's concerning that we have this reality happening. It's not just can, you know, again, do we need enough beds for, for COVID? Right? We need our hospitals to be able to maintain an ability to help any of us, for whatever reason, we may need an ICU bed. And, and, and yes, I, I, I think there's probably many reasons why a joint conversation could be helpful. That being just, just one of them. That's my only question, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Councilor Spardon?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be quick. I, there were a couple of things that were brought up in a really good discussion. And I wanted to, before I ask some questions, add my voice to the joint meeting. And when we talked about this last, which I think was November, we had requested a joint meeting. I agree with Councilmember Davis, I, I think it needs to happen more often. I, once or twice a year isn't enough, given the fact that we're in a global pandemic and we're very close partners. And I think that there are also some partnerships and, and things that can move forward if the supervisors and the mayor and council members get together. And likewise, some, maybe we could cut through some misinformation a lot sooner as well. So I had a couple of questions. Kip, what did you mean by a workshop with the council members? Could you clarify that?
Well, just thinking it, so I'm open to suggestions. I, I, I think, you know, two things. One, your on the ground knowledge of your districts is unsurpassed. Two, we learn best in the E O C when we tap into, into the knowledge of, of, of that kind of on the ground piece. So part of what I was thinking of is going back to my facilitation days, is spending some time to sit down, do some listening and some co-design work, right? So what are, what are the best practices from your campaigning that you think might apply to a vaccination campaign? What would you recommend we do or don't do? You know, what should we avoid? And really workshopping it in, 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 you know, spending, spending a couple of hours just going deep into it and really trying to understand what, what the range of tools that are available, what might work and might not work based on your experience and your expertise as, as campaigners and as the elected representatives of your districts.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I think some of that could probably be done in the study session if we come prepared.
Agreed.
But I just, I, I wanted to have a better understanding of that because we have been sharing some information whenever this comes up. This is an important dialogue for us to, to hear the latest, but also for city staff and our partners to hear what we're hearing. And so I, I do hope that continues. I, I wanted to follow up on the study session, however. So morgues in Santa Clara County are basically at capacity, right? We have, the county announced today that three morgues are full, four, or hospital morgues. Four hospital morgues are near capacity. The county is bringing in three trailers that each holds 60 people and are, I guess, on the verge of activating their mass fatality plan. So, so this, it's dire, right? It's dire. And, and while there isn't a part of the city that isn't touched by COVID, it is really, really bad in some neighborhoods. It is just really bad, whether it's if you combine the health disparities, the mental health disparities, the digital divide and the economic impacts, life is very tough in some neighborhoods in our city right now. And so I, I guess my question is, why are we having a study session at the end of February? If I, if I heard that correctly? And what is it that we are hoping to gain by putting that off a month and a half?
Yeah, the original requests, at least our interpretation of the original request was really to try, try to begin to understand the recovery aspect in particular. And there were so many variables at the federal government level. You know, our recovery, if we have another $120 million of coronavirus relief funds and what we're able to do or not do will be very different if we have zero. And so part of our thinking was we will have a better sense of, of which of those two scenarios we will likely be in by February. That's not to say there aren't issues that are more timely and are happening now in January. It was, it was essentially that train of thinking that got us to that point. Lee, anything more you want to add on that?
No, I would just head on. I think our, our interpretation that that is the study session should very much be focused on recovery. And then the larger, what do we know of the, the intergovernmental relations land? Not just in DC with Congress, but also what's been introduced at the state? And, and how are the, how is the governor's budget being interpreted by the legislature and may change? So all of those variables really won't be known in the next two or three weeks. So both those things being equal, that was why we were positioning for later February.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back to what I just said to Kip then, which is, you know, I, I know we have Brown Act considerations and things like that. But I don't think that we should wait to have that conversation, particularly with Councilmember Carrasco and myself and, and other council members that are dealing with this in different ways, different impacts, because things are moving very quickly. And the other point I wanted to raise was, this pandemic has had a life cycle, right? In the beginning, things were moving so fast. And even though we have uncertainty now, it pales in comparison to the uncertainty that we were dealing with in spring and summer. It was just, it was crazy and I never want to go back to that. But, but we're at a point in this life cycle of this pandemic where we can do some contingency planning and some longer term planning. And, and the reason I bring that up is we as council members interact with our communities all the time. We have all just interacted with our communities this past holidays in major ways, right? In, in unique ways and we all, because we reflect our districts, we all do it creative in different ways, but we are interacting with people on a neighborhood level on a regular basis. I, in Halloween, we give out 7,000 safely, drive through, 7,000 bags of candy. And I know we put little messages in there and Councilmember Carrasco put a little cool little graphic, right? In hers and, and, and I've probably interacted with over 10,000 of my residents in the first two weeks of December, not face to face, COVID like COVID. But, but, but I'm just saying that we do this, we do this all the time, right? We're coming into Lunar New Year, which by the way, we should, we should have some planning and messages for. You know, we have the break, the next school break that you mentioned, right? When I, I'm old, so back when I was in school, it was called spring break, but now it's moved all over the calendar and each district has its own dates. That's coming up, right? So we have these things that are opportunities for us to message constituents and for the city to message. And it was a little frustrating for me to get these requests a, a, as we, as the furlough was starting. And I don't mean just by the city, I, I mean by the county and us, that we're all trying to work together and figure it out. I, I don't mean this, I, I mean this in a constructive way, right? And so I had just interacted with all these folks, lots of schools, neighborhoods, families, kids, elderly, right? Getting messages to people's houses. And then I get this request and it's like, wow, you know what? Two weeks ago would have been a really great time to ask me to get this message out, right? And so there are some messages that we know are going to be evergreen during the life cycle of this pandemic. Get tested, don't gather, right? Things like if you need help, this is where you go, right? Some of those things are evergreen and we can be partners in getting that out to folks, particularly because we as council members are fortunate to have very personal relationships with the people that we, we represent. And I'm looking at Councilmember Foley on my screen. She is very passionate and very close to a lot of the seniors in her district, right? Like name me somebody better to get that message out, right? That's an asset to us as a city that we can use in, in, in planning, we could plan a little bit more. Then on the uncertain things like vaccinations, like we're going to be figuring this out. Let's be real, we're going to be figuring all of this out. It's going to change many times and our messaging on that is going to change. And once we figure some things out, we can include it. So I just, I wanted to, to make that request because I do think that, particularly as Councilmember Peralis just said, like we need to convey this message to folks because the numbers are getting worse. They're not plateauing, they're definitely getting worse. And so I just wanted to bring that up so that we could be a better partner. Lastly, I wanted to thank the mayor for his advocacy for us in, on the federal and the state level throughout this pandemic. And it's been, it is so important for us as a city to have the mayor as part of all of these conversations. And if we do, if we are able to get vaccines, I had a couple of requests and one is that we look at the staffing and the roadmap and the impact to our own city having operations so that we can have more of an upfront conversation so that we can then communicate those trade-offs to our constituents who are still calling us for all sorts of stuff, right? And then also that we look at and advocate for the distribution on a geographic basis. And I bring that up because folks know where to go. If we had a vaccination at Silver Creek High School or at La Placita on Story and King, then it becomes a message of, hey, it's here in your backyard and whoever you are, wherever you fall in the categories that I'm sure are going to change five million times before it actually gets out. Then that becomes the mess, the secondary message and the first, but, but we can still interact with those folks that we're really not interacting as much as we could right now. And so I wanted to bring that up. And also that we really, we also need to talk a little bit more about our own workforce and the workforce of the city on how we can, because we are very close to the businesses in our city. We're closer to the businesses in the county is, right? With the exception of restaurants, I think. But how we can talk about works, workforce, communication, vaccination, things like that. And we should make a formal statement as a city, we're going to do whatever frankly the federal government tells us to do or pays us to do. I, I get it, but we need to have a formal statement for all the advocacy that we're doing, that Ben is doing, that the mayor is doing. We need to make it very clear to folks that the people who need it most, the people, the communities that have been impacted the most and hardest and where things continue to spread for all sorts of reasons, they should not be at the back of the line. They should be at the front of the line because they have borne the brunt of so many impacts of this pandemic. And in my opinion, that should be a formal statement that we make as a city because these things are going to change, the categories are going to change, the rules are going to change. Our discern for our residents should not, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cross.
Thank you. I, I promise this will be my last statement. And so, uh, uh, Councilmember Jimenez just brought up such a great point in term, and, and Councilmember Esparza right now reemphasized it, the, the, the need to make that statement. And, and we are sitting at some of these committees and subcommittees with the county. You know, like Councilmember Esparza said, we're getting the mandate from the feds and then we're getting the mandate from the state and some of it is, it is what it is. We have to follow and the county is going to roll out their program and we're just going to help facilitate. However, as the largest city in the Bay Area and the largest city in the county and the largest and the 10th largest in the nation, what we do matters and others follow our example. And, and it is, again, it's our responsibility to make sure that we protect those that are the most impacted by this horrific virus and those that are most vulnerable. And, and every, every other Tuesday when we bring up this report, we talk about it. It's in the report, we repeat it over and over and over. And so this is the time for us to put a stake in the ground in another way and be able to say, look, if, if in the event, there is a moment where there is an opportunity to have flexibility within this framework, this is our recommendation. We must protect those who are dying. We know the perfect storm, we know where it's about to hit, we know where it's already hit. And so we need to go in there and make sure that those individuals who are about to get hit again are going to be protected and we push those people to the front of the line. And so, you know, I, I want, I want to be really crystal clear about one thing. You know, folks talk about me making a case and advocacy and working for, for my residents, our residents during this horrific moment in our, in our history. Uh uh for for uh my residents, our residents uh during this horrific moment in our, in our history. I want you to to imagine what it's like to sit in the middle of a minefield. And not know which direction to move in for fear. That the next move you make may be the one that uh that is your demise. And I am sitting smack in the middle of nine five one two seven. One of the zip codes that has the highest incidence of COVID cases. And now, you know, I'm fifty three, about to be fifty four. I've had a wonderful life. I'm in no means willing to throw the hat in. But I've enjoyed my experiences. And everything that I do now is to protect my children. And so they're held up here with me. Having a wonderful experience, let me tell you, for almost a year. But it truly is this sense of fear. That it's coming after them. And so I want you to envision what that's like. And some of you that are on the screen live in the middle of this minefield with me. Whether it's in nine five one one six, nine five one two two, nine five one two seven. Cause I know that some of the city staff live in my district as well, or in some of the other highly impacted this uh zip codes. But it is the sense that it's coming after you. Whether you're going to the grocery store, whether you're going for a walk around the block. Or even sitting here in your house and someone's delivering to your doorstep. It is the sense that it's coming for you eventually. And now, I'm doing this for my residents. As much as a selfish reason to do it for myself and for all of the family that you know, I have a very extended family, huge family. I've I counted about fifteen thousand members in the city of San Jose. And many of them live on the east side. Some live in new council member Matt Mahan's district, some live in the downtown area, some live in Willow Glen. But I fear the most for those who live in this side of town, east of one oh one. And so I've had already relatives who have been in the ICU. And by the way, I've already lost two relatives to I uh COVID. And so, so we've got to, uh you know, there's no flattening the curve right now, but we've got to slow down the numbers. We've got to push these folks to the front of the line. We've got to make, make it safe again to go to the grocery stores. So that people can purchase their medication or their milk or their eggs or whatever it is that they need to. Purchase that they can just survive the week. Or simply go for a walk so that they don't go stir crazy. I've been hiking, by the way, Councilmember Ma- uh Mayhan, up at Silver Creek. So that we don't lose our, lose our, lose our minds. But you know, there is a, there's this sense that it's, it's coming for us. It's coming for us because those numbers are surging. And and I don't know if that's the experience that west of one oh one is feeling. But surely, east of one oh one, that's what we're feeling. And so, why can't we put out a statement kit? It doesn't mean that that's the law of the land. It just means that as we're sitting in the subcommittees. If there is an opportunity for flexibility, which I know that right now we don't have flexibility, there's none.
Uh ca- Councilmember, if I could, I I I think it's a great idea. So I think, I think what we can do is is. Again, we've been working on some of what we would be doing as advocacy through Ben's work and IGR. And Lee has been working on it in in terms of statements to the new administration and others. But if I'm, if I'm kind of hearing the 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 sense of the meeting today is what we'd like to do is very clearly on record. Um be clear about what our, our priorities are for our community within the vac- within the vaccinations and how vaccinations are conducted. Realizing that we don't control everything, we don't control the federal government, we don't control the state, we don't control the county. But as opportunities emerge and as possibility for flexibility emerges, as rules change that might allow us to take advantage of that. That we want to put forward a a positive proactive policy statement around, around equity, around place, around the most vulnerable. And I'm making sure that the, that the, those folks are at the front of the line and and thought about in 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 any and all approaches to vaccination. So if I've gotten the sense of the meeting correct, I I'd like to, you know, Lee, you're the master of this kind of work. I'd like to give you a chance to sort of talk through how that might go forward and and how we might bring that back.
So I would suggest um the possibility of, and and I think we might be able to do this under an urgency ordinance. Which I think would be critical with the new administration, but um we are going to, we have been and starting to engage the new Biden. Uh uh President-elect Biden's transition team on a multitude of of issues, including the new stimulus package. Infrastructure package and a variety of other things. We could always amend our annual um, you know, legislative priorities. With a larger policy statement about who in our community needs to go first as part of the um vaccination program. And use that as an opportunity, because again, this is heavily restricted by the federal and state government. I I remain somewhat hopeful with the new administration coming in that we do get additional flexibility. And I think that would probably be our best opportunity to actually change what the regulations look like. So that is something that we could bring back, um you know, high level policy statement. Probably as a part of our next council meeting in two weeks.
Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion on that? Um yeah, I think everyone, I'm sure, has taken a look at the the prioritization that the state has laid out. Uh that I guess there's, federal government sets the phases and I guess the the state is setting the uh. Turn remember, it's not steps, but. Thank you, tiers within the phases, thank you. So one gets phases, the other gets tiers, uh it gets more and more micro. I think it would be helpful, if folks feel that there is something they strongly disagree about in that sequence of priority. About who gets vaccinated and when, then that would be something we would elevate and focus on. I I think, you know. For, based on the conversations I have in the public, I think a lot of folks in the public believe that somehow or another. Governor Newsom or the county are not prioritizing the most vulnerable. And and I believe they are. Uh but obviously, we all know there are real problems in implementation and challenges, not here, but everywhere in the country. I mean, that is the reality of of implementing this vaccine. So it may be helpful for us. If there's a specific area where we think a big part of our community is being overlooked, for us to really focus on that. Because I suspect that, you know, we are going to share the basic values the county shares around protecting the most vulnerable. Uh and that focusing our energy on what we think ought to change would be most helpful. I'm sorry, Councilmember Crossco, were you finished? Right? No, go ahead. You're okay. I I also just want to.
Thank you.
Low set expectations a little bit about the bandwidth of county staff. Um I know we all would love to have meetings weekly with county staff and have them update us and have study sessions and so forth. They got their hands full right now, as you've all articulated well, as you know, a a full ICU, a vaccination program that they're working really hard to ramp up. Uh and a testing regimen that has to continue at a very robust level to save lives. And right now, we know throughout the state of California, we're losing this battle. And they're under an emergency order just as we are. And I think all of us have talked to county supervisors who are often just as frustrated about. You know, one micro decision or another, but a recognition that, hey, we're in an emergency, this is a pandemic. And there's a certain amount of collaboration um and and legislative oversight that is sacrificed. When you're in a pandemic and you have an emergency operations center that has to make decisions quickly and implement quickly. With a really limited bandwidth, with really tired people who are doing a lot. Um and so I understand, appreciate the desire. For more convenings with the county. I think we're going to hear a lot of pushback from county staff. And I think it's justifiable pushback, given all they have to manage, particularly given the fact that we go into study sessions. Uh I know the practice here and I would expect that the county is, there's a lot of staff work that goes into that, preparing reports, making sure folks. Um uh get information well presented. Um so whatever answer we get back from the county is the answer we get from the county. What I would like to pledge myself to do a better job of. Um is to better be a conveyor of information to the county about concerns that are being raised. At the council. And I think Councilmember Crossco said it well, we all, many of us have different roles in partnership with the county. Uh Councilmember Crossco is at the Saturday meetings that we have uh with county staff, lead staff, as well as with the uh. The the task force uh that she co-chairs with, comes with Supervisor Chavez. There are various ways we all have these inputs. Um certainly, as folks really critically need. Information for the following Tuesday, for example, or maybe more quickly than that. Um I would suggest that jointly texting me and Lee with those questions that we need to push to the county. Would be an effective way to make sure that one way or another, those questions will get answered in a reasonable period of time. I just suspect that we're going to have a really hard time pulling the county, and not just the staff, but the supervisors too. Into a lot of convenings with us. Um when, yes, we're the biggest city and so forth, but they got fifteen cities all gripped. All at once. And so we just have to be mindful of the emergency and the burden that they have in that emergency and their ability to be responsive. Um so anyway, I just want to suggest that. And I I know we are all going to work very hard to make sure that information flows from the county. Uh are made more effective uh to to the members of of our city. Uh last question I had, just statement or question really was, Andrea, I really appreciate all the work you're doing with small businesses. To try to help support their applications for PPP. And for the additional uh programs, the um the IDL, the the theater grants. Cultural grants, so forth. Is there a mechanism by which you can inform us if you're out there doing knock and talks? Um literally that we can get out there with our teams and do it with you, or how we can be better engaged in the outreach. Beyond simply social media and emails, which we know are of limited benefit in a, in a city, it's as diverse as ours.
Yes, I'll work with Chris Burton um to to think that through. Right now, it is being done virtually.
Um yeah.
And so we will continue to monitor when we could move from virtual to um more of a boots on the ground strategy. Um but absolutely, we will continue to see how the council and the mayor's office can be engaged.
Yeah, I'd love to be out there uh with you guys when you're able to get out there. Okay, great. Any last questions or comments? Okay, uh let's move on then. Uh item. Sorry, I'm just pulling up the sheet here. Uh we're on to consent calendar, other items council would like to pull from consent. Uh Councilmember Spardon?
Yes, I'd like to um pull two point seven, just to talk about it, and two point nine.
Great. Uh and Councilmember Arenas? No, okay, hands down. Any other items to pull? Okay, let's uh take a public comment on the remainder of the consent agenda. Uh Paul Soto? Is there all the items other than two seven or two nine?
Yes, uh Paul Soto from the horseshoe, um I've been listening to this conversation the entire time and. Uh consent calendar, consent calendar. It's hard for me to 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 keep my comments. To a consent calendar after just listening to what I just listened to. So forgive me if I, if I go off topic. Because I can't just move on, like change the channel after what I just heard. I'm a human being and I'm still connected to to my humanity. And to what is happening and the suffering that's going on in this city. And I cannot thank the Chicano Five enough. And this is the reason why, especially why we need women in government. I mean, did did this was just like. Okay, consent calendar. Um with regard to uh. Just to, just convening this commission on whether or not to extend uh Mayor Luccardo's. Uh uh being mayor in his position for two more years. I mean, this is, it's just, it the the. That committee doesn't even have legitimacy. Number one, for Lamb dep being on it, voting for himself, are you serious? This is, this, this, this doesn't like, like, this doesn't draw like red flag for people's sense of conflict of interest. If that is in conflict of interest, then you know what? I don't know the definition. I'm I'm just an ignorant ignoramus. I just don't know anything about what conflict of interest means, what the word means. Secondly, um you're, you're convening this. Count that committee in order to circumvent the democratic process. You know, I get, like I said, I get tired of giving history lessons and civic lessons, tenth grade civic lessons, that it is a government governed by the people. That you get your powers by the consent of the governed. And what you want to do is circumvent that process by convening this committee to see if you can juice two more years. Out of, out of, out of the city. I mean, this is just like, I mean, wow, are you serious? That's it, I'm going to be here all night.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember, I'm sorry, uh no, we still have another member of the public, Mr. Bigman.
Hi, thank you. Uh with item two point two and the approval of ordinances this week. To speak to the approval and giving the IPA the authority to offer contracts. I think this can speak to the process of how to better delegate power away from the city manager. This item should be along the lines of what the Strong Mayor Commission and the City Charter Commission meetings uh can be about in two thousand twenty one. And much the same as last week, I think the theme once again in this week's committee meeting, committee meeting minutes approval. Of item two point three is again to remind ourselves and offer that new four G and five G is possibly being placed a lot. In local SJ neighborhoods at this time or soon. Uh for the everyday public to make sure telecoms and local government. And uh are following good open policies and practices can make for an important addition in how to address the future questions. And bridging the digital divide of poor community and how to better address positive community harmony, sustainability and empowerment now in the future. And in this, in the difficult few years of COVID nineteen. In uh item two point eleven is again an item developing. Uh wildlife trail in San Jose, a surveillance and data collection can often be used on local city wildlife trails. A reminder, open public policies can develop ideas of trust, love and care between a community and its local government. That can help better define the term uh technology innovation at this time and can offer more well-rounded ideas of what can be community sustainability. Good democratic practices and ideas of peace and not war. Again, uh the city of Davis is uh always uh offering good ideas. Uh with with wildlife trails and open public policies. And to conclude, um. Uh with item two point one two, I feel dumpster days can still be a way to consider and invite all people to clear, to clean up the local neighborhood. And it always can be a good way to devote good communication and trust between those with homes and those without homes. Three one one can work towards problem solving ideas with an open communication chat line between residents of local neighborhoods. And those with homes and those without homes can speak about trash issues and other neighborhood uh issues without it being punitive. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to council. Item two point seven is appointing members to the redistricting commission. Councilmember Asparza.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I uh actually just wanted to pull this to ask a question. Um of how are we going to message the timeline to the commissioners? So the census was delayed in issuing the um the data. And so I looked at the most recent date. Um and now it's May that they're going to issue this data. Um I had been contacted and I'm sure many of us will be by our own commissioners. In terms of the timeline and when they're ready to go. Um but uh you know, we a lot, we need the data from the census. To kick this process going. Measure G gave us the authority to do that, but it's really the question of how we're going to communicate that timeline. And then how we're going to set that timeline um to the redistricting commission.
And this is Tony. Um the redistricting commission, they need to be seated by February first. Um we can proceed with. We can proceed with training them and giving them background on, on redistricting and how to do it and how to look at the data once it comes in using samples. And we would be communicating the timeline to them, the first meetings, the first meeting will be oath. We'll do an overview of expectations, a Brown Act overview. We just met with Charter Commission on Monday and we did sort of the same thing. Oath, expectations, Brown Act training, when. Timeline of, of what we're going to do with, with Charter Commission, set the meeting dates. So that would all be in their first meeting, we'll be communicating that. And then once the, once the data comes back from. The, once the census data comes in, well, that'll come back to council so you guys can give a new due date. And then we can talk about it then as well.
Okay, that's helpful. I just think. There's going to be, even if we start on sort of the basics, there's going to be a long delay. So I just, otherwise we are going to get contacted by all of our appointees. So that's it for my question. Do I need to move approval on this? Mayor?
If you could do that with to this item and all the remaining items other than the two point nine.
Okay, so I move approval of. Two point seven and the remaining consent items except for two point nine.
Okay. Okay, Carl Davis, welcome.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Carl.
I got a board meeting at six o'clock and. This may be out of order, but I just want to weigh in about what Sylvia Arenas and Chappie Jones had submitted in a memo. That I'm a part of that small business advisory task force. Can you hear me?
Carl, I'm sorry, that, that item is coming up. I understand you've got a meeting. If you'd like to submit something in writing, you're certainly welcome to and. And have somebody read that or, or something like that. We just don't take public comment out of order.
Okay, and here's the last thing about the public comment that the other gentleman has said about Sam. You know, I think it lines up well, that if Sam is able to. Continue to be mayor for two years, I know it lines up with all the other election stuff and I think that strategy, good strategy, so. I want to put my name in there for supporting that.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
Okay, we're back to the council. I, I should clarify what I think is a bit of a misunderstanding perhaps. Started with Ms. Soto first that we're appointing members to the redistricting commission on this item. I, I think it was last week, if I'm not mistaken, that was Charter Review Commission. And I think that's the Charter Review Commission is the subject of. At one point of interest in changing the length of term of the mayor's term. I, I don't believe my own term in any way will be affected. By the decision of that Charter Review Commission. I don't think it's legal for them to do that. I suspect it's not, I don't know. But I'm pretty sure it's not on the table. And just to put your fears to rest, Mr. Soto, any charter change has to go to the voters. So in any event, I just want to make sure people are not proceeding under mistaken impression about what our Charter Review Commission will be doing and not doing. All right, back to the council. Any other comments? Okay, let's vote on Councilmember Sparsa's motion.
Minus.
Yes.
Alice.
Hi.
Cohen.
Hi.
Roscoe.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Bulleye.
Hi.
Mayhand.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
La Cardo.
Hi. Okay, item two point nine, our appointments. Vice Mayor, members of committees and boards, Councilmember Sparsa.
Thank you, Mayor. I firstly wanted to thank you for, this is a tremendous job. I don't think anybody envies. The work that you do every year. Getting us all organized and assigning us committees. That does the work of the city. So I wanted to talk about. The resolution that allows the council to. The, allows the city council to appoint the vice mayor, that's in the charter. The charter also allows the council to appoint the non-standing committees. And then, as I mentioned in my memo, there have been a number of amendments to the resolution. That covers the standing committees over the years. And so given that we are in a pandemic, that we are moving very quickly. I would like to move that my memo, which basically. Directs the city attorney to return to the council at our next meeting, which is January twenty-sixth. Or as soon as possible with amendments to Resolution seven nine three six seven. And any other relevant statutory provisions. To clarify that for the council standing committees, including the Rules and Open Government Committee. The mayor continues to make a recommendation of a slate. And the council to the council, who then has the authority to publicly discuss, amend or approve. The final slate of standing committee members. That we, because of that, we defer recommendations, number one and two. To coincide with the timing of the amendment to the resolution. And the number three of the item says, or my goal is not to create chaos. But to just clarify that in the interim period, the mayor's. Slates stand and that we would continue to move forward on that. And then lastly, to move approval of the mayor's recommendation to the council. That we reappoint Chappie Jones as our vice mayor again, and that's my motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparsa. Two questions, one is substantive and one is. Probably more just about language. The substantive concern is this. With regard to some of the appointments. Is everyone able to hear me right now? I know I've got a problem right now with my computer. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. With regard to paragraph three. The second recommendation, of course, is not included in paragraph three. And I understand why, because under the current resolution, I have the direct authority to appoint with regard to standing committees. But it is silent on the question of regional bodies and commissions. The problem we have is that some of those regional bodies have some pretty important decisions coming up really soon. For example. VTA, yes, ABAG, VTA, I think we know we've got a ten-year funding. Plan for Measure B coming up on the twenty-second. Having city of San Jose folks seated who are going to be there for some length of time. Would be advantageous, I think, to the city. I understand that certainly the council can come back two weeks later and change their minds about who they want in those seats. I would suggest that we would include recommendation two in paragraph three to ensure we can get our work done.
And Mayor, so. So that we would appoint, so your suggestion is that we would appoint council members to regional bodies. At this point tonight, is that something, I, I know the council has the authority to make that change at any time. I just want to check with Nora. That's fine with me. I know MTC, ABAG, VTA. Pretty much everybody, all the regional bodies have some big things coming up. So I'm happy to accept that amendment if we can do that with Nora. I just wanted to double check.
I'm sorry. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. If I understand it, you're, you're saying if you come back in two weeks, can, can, any change to the resolution occurs? Can the council then appoint someone else to regional boards or things like that? So I think types of committees.
So I think with the. Let me, let me restate it. See, I make sure I understand it. The mayor is suggesting that we appoint regional bodies tonight. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure that we're not creating any conflicts. I'm fine.
Okay.
With that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll include that as part of the motion.
And the second, or I'm not sure who that was.
That was me. I, I'm fine with that. As long as we have a discussion about it.
Okay. And then, yes, and we can certainly discuss it now as well as two weeks from now when this comes back. And then secondly, the language of paragraph one, and this is probably a very minor point. That I know you're aware of, Councilperson Sparsa, that we can't be making a decision on Resolution seventy-nine three sixty-seven. Today, because it's not agendized. What you're asking to do, just to be clear, is have that come back in two weeks. For us to consider changes, not that those changes will be made based on today's vote.
Correct.
Okay, okay, I just want to clarify that. All right, thank you. Councilmember Prawls.
Yeah, thank you. Just trying to follow here, I guess. I'm just a little confused on the amendment, the way I'm reading recommendation three. I thought it kind of clarified that. As it states. That in, in the interim period that we would remain consistent with. The, you know, recommendations that you propose. So I, I don't know if that, I thought that does the same thing, so.
Well, actually, we, we only refers to recommendation one, which is the standing committees inside the city. Doesn't refer to any of those regional bodies.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I, I wasn't, I wasn't noticing that, that omission there. So that's what you were clarifying and obviously, and, and that was accepted. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. While we're. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be support this, this motion on the floor now. I would like to have a conversation with my colleagues about this, as you've heard me earlier. Share with you is that, you know, my, my. Home life has been really impacted by COVID. You know, we, we're all relatively. Back on track, except with exhaustion, but, but not my child provider. And so for me. I, I want one to, to see some equity among the workload. I have currently, I have four. Four standing committees. And then the other, a slew of other non, the non-standing committees. And then this upcoming year, according to the mayor, I would be assigned to. Three standing committees and then in addition to something that is really, I think. Viewed by many as, as, as a, as a position and I actually, I want to thank you, Mayor, for considering me and. And assigning me to VTA, which is something that I actually have been looking forward to. But as I stated earlier, my home life has really been impacted. My, I don't necessarily have a childcare provider that I can rely on. And I find myself taking more on, on in terms of, of workload. And so, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely happy always to, to support my city in any way that I can. And I've, I know that I've showed that throughout this last year, throughout my whole four-year term. This time I just don't know, and this is, this is something that the, the city council can actually vote on. Without really any major changes, because it is our, under our purview. To make decisions around the non-standing committees. And so there are some colleagues that only have two standing committees. And minimal non-standing committees. And I've got to say that I, 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 you know, I'm honored to, to be appointed, to, to be assigned to this. But I've got to ask my colleagues for their interest in, in a VTA position. Because I really, I just, I don't know that I could do. Do it service with, under the conditions that I have. And the impact that I have on my household because of COVID. And so. I, I want to put that out there. I hope that I can hear from my colleagues in terms of who, who would be interested in, and since we're going to make a decision tonight. I, I also read it the same way, Councilwoman Peralis, that, you know, we would just. Take on the assignments that you're assigned and then in the following meeting that we would then. Have a discussion, but if we, you know, it sounds like we're going to have this discussion right now in terms of non-standing committees, not the standing ones. And so this impacts me and I just wanted to put this out there. I also, you know, there's another aspect to this outside of my, just my personal impact from COVID. And that really is. You know, having equitable representation in all standing committees and non-standing committees so that. Our community is, especially the ones that have been really impacted by COVID. And you all heard what those communities are. A portion of my district i- is in that nine five one two two. And also in the Mount Pleasant District, the nine five one two seven. And so. There needs to be some equitable representation in all the standing committees so that we can make decisions at the committee level. With this in mind, and, and this is where I'm coming from in supporting this and being part of this memo, of course. So that's what I wanted to put out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Arenas. Just so I'm really clear about it, essentially you're saying you, you would prefer to have someone else sit on the VTA.
Yes, as much as that hurts me to say that, because I love the challenge and I have actually. See that as something that I, I just absolutely would love to do. I just, I, I, I can't, I don't know that I would, like I said.
I, I can appreciate that circumstances change and so I get it. I, I just want to make sure it's clear that. My recommendation came from a, a conversation which you indicated this was a high priority. So that's. But I'm certainly open to changing accordingly. And we could also consider the possibility that simply someone remain on VTA. For a couple of weeks until we can come back for a council vote on whoever that permanent person.
Yeah, and Mayor, and I, I said, I, I was really neutral in terms of. What committees, I didn't realize that we could actually, this, maybe this is something for Nora and that I needed to check in with Nora. I didn't know the level. Of conversation that we can have with the mayor, being that we don't have a Brown Act, we don't share a Brown Act. And so I think my, my answers were really limited. And so. Nora, what, what is the level of interaction that we can have in terms of, like, what, what assignments? And because this will be helpful in our follow-up conversation on the twenty-sixth. What kind of conversations can we have with the mayor that don't bind us in a Brown Act in terms of preferences for committees?
I think that. You can't have commitments on who's going to be appointed to what. But to have background information on whether or not somebody who is willing to serve or ha, if there's a question about the ability to, to serve or. Life impacts and those kinds of things, letting the mayor know that is, is fine. But you can't reach a consensus or be talking about who's going to get what or trading off. If I come off this, I'd like you to put so-and-so on, those kinds of things that, that can.
Okay, so I, I kept my language, like, you know, e- either whatever it is, either one, I just didn't want to. I, I just didn't want to violate a Brown Act. So it sounds like as long as the mayor isn't telling me who's he's. The rest of the committee is made up or the swapping or anything like that, I can give him my preferences in terms of this is what I would like. And so. And, and this is where that came from, and I apologize, Mayor, if I wasn't clear, that was my, my, my oversight in not. In trying to protect me, myself in the, in the Brown Act. And so I, I did say either, either one, either of those committees and it, and this is a very prestigious. Just want to say this is a very prestigious. Non-standing committee that, that it, it pains me to say no to. And I think, you know, I, I know Councilmember Carrasco, you were on, on this. Committee before and if it would be great to hear, I don't know if this is something you would continue, you know, for the sake of consistency, this would be something that you would be considered. Considering taking on, you know, I don't want to put you on, on the spot, but, but I know for the sake of consistency.
So I, I, I don't know if it's okay to speak out of turn, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's entirely up to you, Mayor. I, I'll, I'll stay on if it makes it any easier.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. I, I just want to, if I can interject with regard to the Brown Act issue and. Perhaps this is something that may need some more clarification. I proceeded under direction, I typically, I'd had. I proceeded under direction, I typically, I'd had over the years from Rick with regard to this appointments memo, as, as well as with the budget process, which is that I'm, I'm allowed to solicit information about what preferences councilmembers have. And that is what I attempted to do, I believe, with the councilmembers I spoke with. I can think of one exception, where I actually went a step further and said, hey, we may be moving folks around. If this happens, would you want this? But otherwise, I believe that that was pretty consistent in simply asking for preferences in the same way we do with the budget Brown Act process, which is, we're allowed to speak to all the council to receive, again, their preferences and priorities, but not to form consensus, anything beyond that, because of the nature of the process. So Nora, happy to talk with you more offline, perhaps we can maybe dig up some old memos.
No, I, Mayor, I think that's consistent with what I was saying. It's just that there shouldn't be discussions about who's going on what, but you need to know there's interest and availability and those kinds of things.
So I can think of one, one instance in which I did have that conversation. So I will, we'll resolve that as we go forward to next two weeks from now. Okay, Vice Mayor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say, Councilmember Sparza, you have my complete and total support for your item number four. So I just want to let you know, I got you on that one. And then, actually, Raul asked my question about item number three, so I'm glad we have clarification on that. So my final question, Councilmember Sparza, is obviously, put out this, this memo because there was some, either frustration or a desire to see more equitable representation on these different boards and commissions. And I just want to try to understand if it's specifically about the standing committees or is it the regional committees and boards, or is it? I'm just trying to, just trying to get a better understanding of what got us to this point, and just give me some context.
Sure, thank you, Vice Mayor. And so, I, we, I did some research on sort of the charter and the resolution. And I included in the memo, you know, some of the history of changes where the resolution has been amended many times over the years. And so, my goal was, you know, the council does not, as it stands right now, have the authority to approve, to approve or amend the standing committees. The council does have the authority to make changes to the outside committees at any time. We could, we could do that if we wanted to. So it's hard for us to, I wanted to have a discussion about it and be able to talk about it. I'm not looking to, you know, again, create chaos. But as you just heard from Councilmember Adenas, like, we benefit from having this discussion in public, which we otherwise would not be able to have. And in, in particular, in the memo, you'll notice, I did talk about Rules Committee, specifically how it's changed over the years. I think, just to be really candid, it's really personally important to me that we, as a city, really look at rules on how to move things forward to have a public discussion, particularly in light of the pandemic. We most recently had a discussion about, you know, whether we should fast-track a joint powers authority, which was already on the timeline. And, and so, I'm looking to, to open that up. And that's what I'll, I'll say for now, and I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, specifically around rules. Is your feeling that rules is being used to block council memos and proposals and initiatives from various councilmembers, or what's, what's your perspective on rules?
I, I, you know, having most recently gone through that experience, we had a discussion about it at council. In my opinion, we need to prioritize people right now. We need to prioritize our residents and, and our workforce and to have those discussions move forward to the open council so that we can all have that discussion. That's, that's ultimately my goal. I hope that answers it.
No, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I wanted to just say that, I think, I support this memo because I think it's just a good governance thing. I mean, I've been, you know, I, most public agencies that I've seen, when they're reorganizing themselves every couple of years or every year, however often they do it, they do it publicly and they do it with an open discussion about who's going to serve on what committees. And so, to me, I, you know, while I think it makes sense because of the sheer number of committees and things that we're doing to have that, that list pre-populated through the discussions that people have with the mayor, I think it makes sense for the council to then look over that list and have a conversation publicly about who's best suited to be on what committees and maybe have the opportunity to make some adjustments to those, to those lists. Not necessarily make wholesale changes, but make adjustments where the council sees fit. And I think those Brown Act limitations, as far as being able to have full discussions with the mayor, mean that we have to have that discussion publicly. So I think it's important for us to have the ability as a council to do that advise and consent over the appointments and take a look and be able to have that conversation. So, so I support that. One other thing that's, that was interesting to me, though, about the, the history, looking at what Councilmember Sparza put on her history was about the decision about who's chair and vice chair of each of the standing committees. It's also, was kind of surprising to me to sort of predetermine who those leadership positions are. And maybe it's an interesting discussion to have as to whether the committees get formulated and then the committees themselves make a decision about who's going to be their chair and vice chair during those, those times. Maybe they have an organization meeting at the beginning of the term to choose their own leadership positions. So, you know, I'm interested in whether the council thinks that perhaps allowing the committees to organize themselves with their own chair and vice chair makes sense rather than have those, those positions pre-picked by the council ahead of time or by the mayor ahead of time.
Councilmember Crossco?
I was, I had raised my hand in order to make the suggestion of VTA.
Got it.
Thank you.
So why don't I then suggest that amendment to Councilmember Sparza to supplant, Councilmember Arenas' name for now with Councilmember Crossco's until this item comes back to council.
I accept. Thank you.
Okay, and with the secondor, yes, Councilmember Arenas suggested it, okay. All right, any other comments on this item? Let's go to the public. Mr. Beekman?
Hi, thank you. I just simply wanted to thank yourselves at this time for allowing myself to speak a public comment on item 2.9. That's been singled out compared to the other consent calendar items that have been already approved. So thank you for, for, you used to do this as a habit and in the name, or just good practices. And the name of efficiency, you haven't been doing this as much lately. The fact that you are allowing myself to offer public comment on this individual consent calendar item is an important step. I hope you can continue to do this through 2021. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Mr. Serto?
I echo, good evening, council. I echo what Mr. Beekman had just stated. These are times when it, there needs to be the collaboration between what the, what the council debates and then what the public has, because sometimes we are able to formulate a position based on what is heard. And, and then, and then kind of fortify that and build upon that so that we can get, maybe if, maybe if we don't come into an agreement, we can get a more distillation of the clarity to where each person's position is at least understood in a more, in a more comprehensive way. That's number one. Number two, I liked, really liked what Senora Sparza had stated with the motive in terms of the prioritization of people and not property. You know, what the case in point is the trail, this is just for an example. The, the trail, the three creeks trail, we're taking 1.1 million dollars from one area so that landscaping and pavement can go in Willow Glen, the most redlined area. We're still not talking about it, and I'm not going to be quiet about it. The most redlined racist area in this city. Their wealth was literally built on the backs of my people that are still suffering in Salzypuedes. I'm an hijo de campasinos de Salzypuedes. That's who I am. So I'm still dealing with the generational traumas that were, that were built upon the wealth that's sitting in Willow Glen. And now, and now, they want 1.1 million dollars so that they can have beautiful landscapes for their dogs. And so that when they're looked, walking on this trail, and in fact, those trails were built on the railroad tracks of the canneries, the old canneries, now they're being paved over. So that's just an example about the governance in those committees. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to council. Any other comments? I just had one question. Councilmember Sparza, you mentioned something about a JPA. Are you referring to the issue relating to the construction of moderate and low-income housing with the JPAs? Is that, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I was referring to that as an example.
Okay, all right, because I believe the Rules Committee moved that forward. But, okay, let's vote then.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralos?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Olley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye. All right, we're now at the 5:52 mark. Let me just take a quick temperature read here. If we were to take a break until 6:30, would that give everyone enough time for, for food? I usually look to Chappy for these, for Council, for Vice Mayor Jones, because I can tell if he's, if he's in pain, it's not going to work.
I'll take one for the team, if everybody else is okay with 6:30.
All right, let's recess to 6:30. We'll be back for, resume the meeting. Thank you.